All to order. I'm seven oh two. Okay. Reading Aruva speaking, John.
Aloha, this is your community public forum, your input and cooperation, I really appreciate it. The Ever Neighborhood Board is an advisory board and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure the effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair, to my left, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. And while we're taking this moment, please remember to silence all electronic devices for those here in the room. That includes you, Chair. Video teleconference, the board will make a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure, those you that are online, that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. And as a reminder, two thirds vote, which is eight members of this eleven member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Introduction of board members, starting from my right. Go ahead, John.
Aloha, everyone, my name is John Clark III and I am the vice chair.
Trey Ordner, treasurer. Liam Chin.
William Clavie.
Hi, John Rogers.
Hi, everyone, Alexander Gauss.
Mitchell Tynanis and online, we have Jana.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jana.
I don't see anyone else, we have a quorum, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on to public safety first responders, Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, Captain Nakamura from the Eva Beach Fire Station. So our statistics for January are two wildland brush fires, one nuisance fire, eleven activated fire alarms, one hundred and seventy-three medical calls, two motor vehicle collisions with pedestrian, eleven motor vehicle accidents. And our fire safety tip for this month is don't stall, call nine one one. Call nine one one right away when there is an emergency. Once the operator is on the line, speak clearly and provide an accurate description of the type of emergency and the location. Remain calm, the operator may ask for additional information and provide instructions. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception for voice communication, you can text your emergency to nine one one. If you don't know the passcode to unlock a cellphone, you can push the emergency button to unlock it and call nine one one. That's all that we have, thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? See none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Okay, moving on to HPD.
Aloha, board, Eva board, Eva community, Sergeant Moroka with Honolulu Police Department, District Eight Community Policing. I have the crime stats for January of twenty twenty four. For the district, motor vehicle thefts was forty, in Eva there were fifteen, burglaries there were twenty-four in the district, nine in Eva Beach, one hundred and sixty thefts in our district, Eva Beach had thirty-six. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, forty-three for the district, thirteen in Eva. Total citations issued were two hundred and fifty-three for January. Calls for service, six thousand five hundred eighty-nine in our district, of which one thousand eight hundred twenty-four were in or from Eva Beach. Those are the crime stats for January. Any questions or concerns, I can address those.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? See none, thank you, okay, moving on to Weed and Seed.
That would be me again. I was asked to make one announcement. Celebrate Safe Communities will be an event at Pro Ridge on March ninth, ten AM to three PM, we'll have all the law enforcement agencies, including federal, state, and city. I believe it's Phase One, which is on the side where Macy's is, in the parking lot, and inside at Center Stage, we'll have resource booths. Also, we'll have vehicles, I think HFT was there last year, I think they're participating again, they're gonna bring their truck, we'll have all the different divisions from HPD, including solo bike SWAT team, and everybody's gonna bring their vehicles, so if there's any cakey that wanna come down and check it out, also the families, then we'll be down there, and it's it's an event to promote neighborhood security watch and other ways to make your neighborhood safe, so everybody's welcome to join us, ten to three PM, ten AM to three PM. That's all I have for Weed and Seed.
Thank you, any questions from the board, Weed and Seed? Community? None? Thank you, Sergeant, stay safe. Okay, moving on to board administration and planning, approval of regular board meeting minutes for January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Okay, seeing no, all good? Yeah, um, any motion? Hey, second? Need a second? Yep, moves in second, okay, we're gonna file as read or as stated. Moving on to resolution for Geiger Road, Kapale Parkway intersection, right turn lane, Julie.
Hi, this is brought up from a resident who asked questions about potentially turning the, one of the lanes to a right turn only lane, and that's on the Geiger Street at the cross of Kapale Parkway and Geiger, if you are facing east, so imagine you're traveling from Costco and coming back into Eva, and then there's two lanes as you come up, as you approach the stoplight, and the right lane turns, right lane and goes straight and to the right, and so the, he said that it clogs up pretty far back sometimes with people who wanna make right turns, because the person who's sitting at the light is just waiting to go straight, but they could've gone in the left, in the other lane, so to potentially look at changing the right lane into a right turn only lane. There's no resolution here for this one, so it was just to get a discussion, which is what I was talking to Councilman Tobo's office about, about, I think that when the study was, the traffic study was originally done, it was done to push the cars from, from where it was going out to Fort Weaver, and I guess there was a traffic study done for the wastewater treatment plant, maybe about within the last ten years, they could look at that, if not a new traffic study, it would probably have to be done to look if that's something feasible. Potentially, it could be on one of the, did we say, one of the roads, it might be on a road listing, right, for something to do potentially, but we're not sure about that one yet, so I just wanted to put this up for discussion, if anybody on the board or anybody in the public maybe had some ideas and and comments about that, if we can just open it up for that, thank you.
Okay, so there's no resolution, just was a community member for a community concern about that intersection?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So since we're on this, anybody have anything for that? Okay, John and then Alex, go ahead.
Board member Julie, I think that's an outstanding idea. We kinda went through the same thing, traffic exiting Eva Mackay Middle School, I don't know if you guys remember, they were on the board back then, that was a heavy lift, mostly because of the easement between city and county, state and gentry. I don't think this one will be as difficult if we if we push through, I I feel the same way about that intersection, I think that far right lane could easily be a right turn only lane, and that would clear up a lot of congestion, in fact, I think there's, it appears as though more traffic is turning right than going straight right there, and that's probably not the case, but it looks that way.
Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, are you talking about both westbound and eastbound directions? Or, is that, I, I, well, I actually, I see, I don't think it's a safety issue at this point, but it could be as, I think they're gonna put in a light down there by the wastewater plant and all that, and so that right hand going eastbound is also a problem, and it's something that, so I think if we're gonna do it, we should think about trying to get it for both sides of.
Okay, Julie, go ahead.
Oh, I just mentioned only what the resident had told me, which was going westbound, but I I'd gone both ways too, so I think eastbound is probably an issue too.
Okay. Gonna move on to renaming James Campbell High School softball field to Loki Hadi Campbell High School Softball Field. Senator, could you please give a background on it real quick?
Since it's written, I wanna write it, read the way it's written. My name is Kurt Fivella and I appreciate the time tonight, Chair Tynanis, vice chair, members of the board, in Namie, James Campbell High School Softball Field to Loki Hadi. James Campbell High School Softball Field, hope to have you guys support in our Namie softball field. Loki Hadi and her husband moved in the early seventies, she raised two boys, two girls in Eva States, four kids all graduated Campbell High School. Mister and Mrs. Hadi, of course, it was coaching, well, Mrs. Hadi coached softball program and became the first female coach in the state of Hawaii. At this time, as you guys know, was the gender equity thing that was happening, and then she had strived for a lot of things. She coached through the eighties and the nineties, at the same time coaching softball. You would often see Mister Hadi volunteering schoolkeeping and so fun and so on, and then of course, the ticket booth and dedication, her time to James Campbell High School Athletics. Mrs. Hadi is a volunteer in her time in the community, her little league, bobby socks, volleyball, basketball, all four kids, of her kids all played and was active in those sports. Even today, we often see Mrs. Hadi on the sideline at the football game, softball games. In two thousand, she was coach of the football team, within thirty years of coaching James Campbell High School Service of Eva Beach Community. And I'm proud to wanna lead the charge to naming this Loki Lani, and all the contribution she did for the community, so naming a softball field for her is truly deserving. I close Eva Beach Neighborhood Board to let you know that I'm bringing this not only to the Neighborhood Board, to other community meetings, Eva Beach Lions Club, the alumni, and what is that other one, every time I forget that one, anyway, something to do with Campbell High School's kids, whatever, anyway, but going forward, the reason why I I started two thousand eighteen, maybe before, trying to get this thing off the ground, everybody's okay, Principal Lee, Rory, nobody has a problem, but there's a process or some kind of hindrance, the reason why I ask that I want the Neighborhood Board to help me support this is because it's out of the ordinary, because a lot of times, excuse me, all the time, we end up naming things after people when they passed away. She's a treasure, I don't know if you guys go to any games, I never even talk about basketball, volleyball, pretty much any sport that's here, she's either doing tickets at the door or escorting family members, believe it or not, in the parking lot, so she's a gem in our community, and I, you know, I look up to her, even though she's shorter than me, and I'm proud to not only be a friend and to play for her for a little while, but she's an awesome person, and I just know that a lot of you guys don't really know her, I know you guys know her daughter, she's the security at the shopping center, but this family is well known of sports, Tracy was an O A championship basket team, but the reason why we're talking about her today is because she's alive, well deserved to have something named after her and not wait till something happen and then we do it, so she can appreciate this being named after her while she's alive. Again, thank you for the time, Chair Tynanis, vice chairs, appreciate you guys' time and aloha. God bless.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Go ahead, Alex.
Thanks, Kurt, I think that's, that sounds really fantastic, I'm wondering, so what exactly can we do to, I'm not sure on the process, I'm wondering how we can support that.
Well, if you guys, just show you guys' support in any way, it can be individually or you guys because on the agenda, take up a vote, if you guys support them, going forward, it means more more to to her, her family, and us to go forward, because I'm pushing this, have a bill going through the Senate to have a name after her, but it's good to have the support, because you guys are elected by the people, just like me, and having you guys' support means so much to me personally, because I know I was one of, once, once were you guys there, and I don't wanna ever bypassing or ever disrespecting the Neighborhood Board and not giving you guys a chance to chime in, so thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, John.
So I attended your town hall the other day, and Muphi Hanneman was there, and I was just, I was kinda happy to see him, I haven't seen him in a long time, and he made a very specific comment, and when he was mayor, he he named the Fosse Building after Frank Fosse while Frank Fosse was still alive, and that was unprecedented, and he was able to get it through, and he said he was just totally on board with naming something when the person's alive, you think it's the right thing to do, and and yeah, so do I, so thanks, Kurt.
Well, thank you, John, I actually forgot about that this rate, that's what he brought up, thank you for that comment.
Any other questions for the board? Seeing none? All in favor for naming, not renaming, but naming James Campbell High School Softball Field to Loki Hadi Campbell High School Softball Field? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous?
Praise the Lord, thank you very much. God bless.
Okay, moving on to presentations, Weed and Seed out with COVID, moving to next one. Okay, moving on to surface danger zone at Puula Range Training Facility.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. So I'm here today to present to you a deep concern that has been revealed regarding the Puula Range Training Facility, which, we go to the next slide? Oh, that's me, me, I'm talking to myself, okay, it's been a long day. For all of you who are not familiar, the Puula Range Training Facility is operated by the U S Marine Corps, it's located on the end of Fort Weaver Road here, take a look here, this is the aerial view of the range, sorry, can we zoom back in, just zoomed back out, you can see the nearest dome is two hundred and thirty feet away from the range. Okay, I also wanna show you, this is the location of the range, you see, it's right here on the beachfront, this is a one of a kind range, there's nothing like it in the state of Hawaii in terms of a military live fire training facility being in immediate proximity to a community, a beach park, schools, homes, and so forth, so I'm showing you this for context, so you understand where this is. I also wanna tell you today that all shooting ranges are required to have something called a surface danger zone. What is a surface danger zone? Basically, what it says is based on the type of weapon you're firing and the ammunition, if there was to be a ricochet or a stray bullet exiting the range, how far could it go and where would it go? When you got thousands of people firing rounds out in a range, we need to know what that surface danger zone is, if in case, you had an errant round and it left the range, where could it potentially go? So mathematicians, safety officers, they figure this out, and I'm gonna tell you today something that we've discovered through months of research by career Navy officers with advanced degrees in aviation safety. So what we've discovered, let's start here, what is the requirement for a shooting range such as PRTF, which is right next to the community? The requirement according to the U S Marine Corps Safety Manual states, for the Marine Corps, the bat wing, that's a type of surface danger zone, the bat wing will be applied when designing or conducting training on ranges that involve fire and movement, fire and maneuver, flanking fire, and/or when ricochet hazards outside the range boundary may endanger non-participating personnel, that's you. Let me put that in plain English, there's a type of calculation that the Marine Corps is required to use when a shooting range is next to non-military facilities such as homes, parks, non-participating personnel, okay, this is a safety measure for you. However, PRTF is not using the bat wing structure, surface danger zone, which they're supposed to be using, therefore, it is not operating in accordance with the U S Marine Corps Safety Regulations and is endangering the public. A fragment, there's a bullet fragment or a round escapement from installation boundaries could result in property damage, injury, and death. Let me show you here, don't get dizzy, you can follow me on this, this is what a bat wing looks like, so when you do the math based on the caliber of weapons, this is for the Alpha Range, which is the first range on the western side, you see where that dot starts up the top, if people are firing weapons from the end of that sniper range, and there was to be a ricochet based on the caliber of weapon and the ammunition used, this is where it could go, you see where it crosses significant amounts of the Eva community here on the west and Kapalina to the east? Y'all see that? Let me zoom in closer, can you see this? Here's the shooting range, do you see, this is the bat wing, this is the correct calculation that is required to be used for PRTF. I just wanna show you, look what's inside there, we got the park, we got homes, we got the school, this is where a stray bullet or a round escapement or a fragment could potentially go, according to the U S Marine Corps' own safety manual. Okay. This is what they are currently using instead, they are not using the bat wing, they are not using this, they are using this, this is known as a cone, surface danger zone. A cone surface danger zone is allowed when there are not non-participating personnel in the area around the range, okay, this is, this is what we're talking about, when there is not a community, there's not a park next to the range, this is not allowable. I'm gonna go back to the rule here, this is not allowable, it says, let's read the, it says, the last sentence there, when there's fire maneuver, flanking fire, or when ricochet hazards outside the range boundary may endanger non-participating personnel, a bat wing will be applied, this is the bat wing, okay, this is the cone that they're using, that's not allowed. What does the Marine Corps say when we bring this up? What do they say? They say, well, we've got these dirt berms, the dirt berms are sufficient to contain any projectiles or round escapement, incorrect, dirt berms are not effective or an allowable method, take a look at the top of this berm here, from Charlie, you can see where the bullets impact the berm, clearly some of them don't stay in, but moreover, and more importantly, what is the Department of Defense say about small arms ranges like this? Impact berms will not capture all projectiles because ground skips and ricochets will continue downrange, therefore, the shallow impact berms of PRTF cannot be considered a method of sufficient projectile containment, this is not an effective form of containment, the dirt berms are not allowable as a form of containment. Okay, so, how much time do I have? Okay, good, good. We hear all sorts of stories from surfers, from divers, about bullets whizzing by them when they're when they're out there, okay, we hear this all the time, we also hear over the loudspeaker every day when they shoot, we hear the guy on the speaker who wakes us up every morning and say, he says, no impact, no idea, do you know what that means? That means they don't know where the where the round went, no impact, no idea, so we're reminded regularly that that's a possibility. So while we have not officially documented, there's tons of anecdotal stories of bullets leaving the range, and lastly, surface danger zones don't account for human error or terroristic motives, let's say, like what happened in the Navy shipyard a few years ago, a guy goes rogue and decides to start shooting in all directions, that's not captured by any of these surface danger zones, so in truth, in truth, about a three point two mile radius all the way around the range would be considered an area where a round could go, so the Marines claim it has never happened yet, therefore, it won't ever happen, that's the equivalent of saying I've been, haven't been wearing a seatbelt for thirty years, so I'm good, there, nothing's ever gonna happen, it's only a matter of time, secondly, since the PRTF has been in operation over a hundred years, but since two thousand sixteen, they moved training for seven thousand Marines from K Bay over here, so seven thousand additional Marines are shooting at K Bay, collectively, millions of rounds per year have been added of shooting, the more you shoot, the more the risk goes up, so you may say it hasn't happened, but it's only a matter of time, and ultimately, it doesn't excuse not using the required safety protocol. Okay, I wanna move on here. They're also in violation of the vertical space, this is the approach to Honolulu International Airport, these red lines are airplanes that would be coming in, this is the vertical danger zone, because when a ricochet hits, it can also go upwards, or let's say a tilt of a rifle, oops, it accidentally went upwards, three thousand foot buffer required, Puhakalua has it, Schofield has it, Camp Lejeune has it, Camp Pendleton has it, it's called a special use airspace, it's required, the Marine Corps must establish a special use airspace for small arms ranges, guess what? There isn't one, there is no special use airspace, therefore, on a regular basis, the heavy traffic flying in and out of Honolulu International Airport regularly is transiting through a danger zone. I wanna show you a more, well, let's see here, so now, this is another way I look at it, here's the danger zone going into Honolulu, above the range and beyond, here is the different flight, some of the different flight paths you might come on, all of these flight paths intersect the danger zone, okay, I wanna put this in plain English, on a regular basis, every day, airplanes are flying through this danger zone, there is, they have not established a special use airspace like Schofield has, right, which comes along with what they call a restricted area, which means their planes cannot be flying through there when there's live fire training going on, but of course, we all know that that would be impossible, how would the Marine Corps says, oh, well, we have, we have observers that call for a ceasefire when a plane's coming, we know that's not true, do you know how many planes come in there per day? They could never, never fire, the range couldn't operate, we have ample video footage of planes coming in while they're shooting, so we know that this has not been assessed, so what are the takeaways? Number one, the Marine Corps does not follow the required surface danger zone for our safety, number two, the Marine Corps has not established special use airspace as required, number three, the Marine Corps, and I didn't mention this, has also not obtained the required permit to fire over navigatable waters, so while they call, they have a notice to mariners, the boats going by, they have not actually gotten a permit allowing them to fly over, fire over water. they have not actually gotten a permit allowing them to fire over water. These violations put the public at extreme risk. So I just want to say one last time that these are the Marines' own safety regulations. This is out of their own manual. This is out of the Department of Defense's manual. And I want to point out again, Schofield, Puhakalua, Camp Lejeune, Camp Pendleton, they all have a special use airspace, right? So that's, there's two main violations happening here. Number one, they're not using the bat wing, which they're supposed to. I'll go back to that.
Point of order.
Right? They're not using the bat wing and they're not using, they have not established a special use airspace.
Thank you, Trey.
Okay, so I appreciate your time and if there's any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, Trey.
Go ahead.
Appreciate the presentation. I do want to make it clear for the community's benefit that this is a presentation by the gentleman. It's not the board itself making this presentation. Just point of clarification, that's all. Not commenting on the content, but I want to make it clear.
I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Yeah, and so even though that is true, what was stated just now, I'm sure that you guys can see that this is ludicrous. And you know something? I have a lot of relatives inside of the U.S. Marine Corps and I support them. But we don't support this. And you guys already hear this. So it's okay that he made that statement, but you guys know, we're not stupid.
Go ahead, John.
You know, this will be, this will continue to be a contentious issue in the community. The range has evolved over time, the community has evolved over time. And to the presenter's point, these guidelines were established by the Marine Corps. At different times, the Corps may decide to do what it does. I'm not saying that we should dispense with having this discussion. It's an important discussion. But while we're on the topic of the Corps, I would like to take at least 30 seconds for a moment of silence for the five Marines that recently died in California in their training. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Chair, I want to say one more thing before we move on.
Go ahead, Wayne.
You know, this, what he just did just now, showed respect, yeah, of the highest. You're asking us to do the same thing. We're asking them to do the same thing for us too. Show respect, that's all. You know, we respect, we respect all of our, our military forces out there. We need them. We support them, but yeah, be porno, bro. Show the respect back. Reciprocal respect is important here in Hawaii, you know? And, and yeah, I'm all for this, all the time, every time. But it should be reciprocal.
Thank you.
Any other question for the board? Yeah, can I clarify with?
Go ahead.
I appreciate the moment of silence. I'm curious for those sorts of personal privileges that, do we need to request that from the Chair? Because I didn't hear it requested. Asking, what is the protocol? Chair, I'm speaking to the Chair. Is that, is in order to exercise personal privileges such as that, do we need to request that from you? No?
I guess it's just the privilege of the Chair. So if you want to, you want something?
No, no.
Okay.
Show for future reference, yep.
Yep, not a problem. Good question. Any other questions from the board? Wait, excuse me. Any question from the board? Question for the community? Step up, come up. Step, your name and your question, please.
Melvin Omro. I've got a question. I just wanted to ask the board, just to clarify. So there was a letter I got from one of the representatives. I forgot her name, but what I wanted to clarify about the range was it, so I think the problem is with the ranges, of course, they're not following a lot of safety rules and guidelines. So it's very dangerous. Also, I read too that the range has doubled, right? So the range has changed. So that, that does concern, that's a lot of problems. I can see why, you know? But for a long time, I was trying to figure out what's going on because I noticed there was a lot of difference in the range, meaning like, you know, I heard a lot of noise, you know? Before, I heard the range for a lot of, a lot of times, but I seen a lot of like, you know, more military presence than before. So I respect what John was saying, sometimes how the Marine Corps has different motives, you know, over the times have changed. And also respect you too, Liam, about how you were saying the Marine Corps is not following, you know, the rules and regulations. And that is a concern for the public and everyone. And also, I want to say too, as, you know, as a naval RTC member back in 2000, since I graduated, I have respect for the Marine Corps too, but the Marine Corps should also have respect for the people. So, you know, I'm with you guys. Thank you. Aloha.
I just confirmed a couple of facts here. Yeah, he's correct. There, I meant to mention that Alpha Range doubled in size when they added the sniper capacity. That also changed the surface danger zone and dramatically increased the size of it. So you're correct, and the amount of shooting.
I thought they already had the sniping range. They added that. Now, do you know when they added it?
What year was the sniper range? Oh, it's, they got funding in 2010, so sometime after 2010 it was added. And then in 2016, they moved the 7,000 Marines for annual rifle qualification over. So both the size of the range doubled, Alpha Range doubled, and then amount of usage significantly went up, 2016 onwards. So that's correct. Thank you for sharing that.
Go ahead. State your name and your question, please.
Tara Rojas. So my question would be then, first of all, thank you, you know, for your diligence, due diligence, and providing this information. So my question would be, now what can be done? Like, you know, so it's presented. What can we do as a community? What can you all do as a board to make sure that this is changed? It's not to just be presented and then not do anything. Mahalo.
Thank you. I just got a few comments. Danny Hayes just clarified the sniper range was in existence since the Vietnam War over there at the Puhua Range. Also, living in Ever Beach my whole life, I'm pretty sure that the Marines abide by all federal regulations, FAA regulations that they do. And if there is a, being porno with the community, they're here every meeting. They're trying to address our concerns and we're trying to move forward with it. So I think personally, I think the Marines are doing what they can right now to move forward with, with the concerns that we have. That's just my, my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, I just like to add to that.
World War I.
Yeah. Can I just show you, Chair? When you mentioned that it was since the Vietnam War, actually, the cone SDZ graphic I showed, that, that doesn't even show in that cone. It doesn't even show the sniper range in there. It wasn't even, if you look at the picture here, it's not even there. So I don't know if that's correct, but maybe in a future meeting, we could square that out. And I just wanted to answer the community member's question about what, what can we do? Because I think that was an important question. Last year, the board passed a resolution calling for the relocation of the range. If you'll recall, it was passed unanimously. And I think both these gentlemen here, Board Member Clark and Tanana has abstained in that vote, they, from voting on it, but it did pass. It also passed the State House and the State Senate. So we're actually currently working with the Congressional delegation, who's been very supportive about helping the Marines to find a modern new facility where they can train. We support them, we want them to be ready. That's not it. I have family that have served in the military. We want them to be prepared. This is just not the place to do it, right? This is, this is not the right place to do it. So we're going to work and make, find a win-win situation for everybody.
Okay, John, go ahead. And then I've got one more thing and then we can go.
So Board Member Chin, I personally appreciate your comments. I attended a meeting with Representative Martinez. Rep Alcos was there as well. We've come a long way with the Marine Corps. Many of us have been on this board for approaching, some of us over a decade now. We have progressed and the communication now is at its best that it's ever been. So when I made the distinction earlier of saying, you know, that's your presentation and not the board's, I didn't mean for Board Member Wayne to take it derisively, offensively. Wayne, let me finish. Let me finish. So it started out, as I talked about it at the meeting we have with the representatives, as a noise complaint when Big Voice was brought on board. And the community had some very real concerns about advertisements at 6:45 in the morning for tacos and things like that. And then it eventually evolved into a larger discussion about the range itself. But we've progressed each way along that way, to the point that the Codeil, the Congressional delegation, is now actively involved. In fact, it was a member of Senator Hirono's office was at the last meeting with the two representatives. So, you know, it was very contentious at the, at the beginning, but now we're at the point where everyone is communicating, everyone's listening to one another. I know with that follow-up report that you gave, Liam, I appreciate that. You saying what's next and where we're going. I think I would have appreciated the presentation, just, you know, looking back, leading with that is where we're at now. And then saying, you know, and then providing the facts. I think that would have probably satisfied the community members' question about, okay, so what does all this mean and where are we going and how are we going to resolve this? Thank you.
Chair, can you clarify, John Clark? What you're referring to, a meeting that we're all speaking at? I don't know what, what meeting you're referring to. Everyone's having conversations and things are progressing. Where?
There was a meeting at the State Capitol with the representatives on a working group.
So this is a working group for who? And like, this is the first I've heard of it. I don't know if anyone else on the board has heard of it. So you're talking about something that everyone's communicating about. It sounds like you're the only one that's familiar with this meeting.
No, I mentioned Rep Alcos was there, Rep Martinez was there.
Are you representing the board there?
I'm not saying that I was representing the board. I was in attendance at the meeting.
Okay, because yeah, I think that's an important distinction. Because if you are going to be representing the board, we would need to vote on, on, on our agreement that you would serve as the representative to that group you're discussing. If you're going as a community member, that's a difference.
I just, I just clarified that for you. I said I was not there representing the board.
Okay, okay. I just got one more, real quick, real quick question about that bat wing. Yeah, so kind of like, you know, I made my drawing. So my drawing is, because you're saying off the ricochets, how it goes out two miles, three miles, right? Wouldn't it be off bat wing there because of the ricochet? Or are they purposely aiming away from the? I mean, I get clarification because it, what I heard was ricochets.
Yep.
Because if it
berms are.
Yep.
You know, it's, it goes, it goes, no, it's not just at the target. It's because, keep in mind, there's berms on the sides too. They're not just on the end, right? And there's berms within between each range. These are all separate ranges with berms, multiple berms going horizontal and perpendicular. So if it was to ricochet off one of the side berms, where could it go? Understanding that they're not all standing in one central spot. These guys are all lined up firing.
Okay.
In a direction, yeah. So these are, I just want to clarify that this was done by career naval officers with advanced degrees in aviation safety who did the math. It's simple math where they look at the caliber of the weapon and, and the bullets. And they, and they're able to plug that into the Marines' own formula and it's a, it's a mathematical formula about where it can go. So it's not about opinion. And we welcome any concrete evidence that this is not the case. I agree about an open dialogue. And I actually appreciate the way Major Fox shows up. It's not easy. You know, he has to, he's, you know, he comes in here and he, he's always, he's always willing to have a discussion. And so we welcome any and all evidence showing that it's okay to not use the bat wing, that, that this is not correct. We'd, we'd love to be proved wrong.
Okay, we've got to move on.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I say something before we move on, sir?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify and let the record show that I did not take offense to what he said. I was just trying to put it in a different way on the consensus of the people that I spoke to inside of the community who feels the way that we're talking as opposing this. We're not opposing the Marines. We're opposing this gun range should be relocated. I mean, that, that's the consensus that I was trying to convey.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on. Presentation C, relocation of existing telecommunications facility. Telecommunication, telecommunications equipment to the facility. Who do we have here or online?
That would be me. Shane, sorry. Can you guys hear me okay?
Shane, what is your last name?
Visitation. You need me to spell it? Well, actually, I'll have it up on the screen if I can share my screen here. Let me know if you guys can see it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Shane and I'm with Network Connects. I'm here on behalf of Crown Castle. And Crown Castle is proposing to remove an existing 70-foot Slimline pole and install a new 70-foot monopole, basically within the same property. This would be at the 911841 Fort Weaver Road in Eva. This next slide here is an aerial view. Sorry, skip this, skip the page. But this one is a street aerial view of where the location is at. This is a little bit easier to see here. This is a Google Earth image from above. To the right is an arrow pointing out where the existing pole is. And then the one to the upper left is where the new location would be on the same property. So basically, the Crown Castle is proposing to remove the existing pole and install a new 70-foot monopole within the same property. One wireless carrier will be installed on that new pole and which will also have room for future tenants for local co-location. This next slide here is basically an aerial site plan from Crown's zoning drawings. The existing facility is the one lower to the right and the new proposed facility would be the one up and to the left. And this next slide here shows a elevation view of the proposed pole. Again, keeping with the same height of 70 feet. They did prepare a photo simulation, the difference between the existing pole and the new pole. The image to the right, which was on every sheet, every slide, is the existing pole. And the one to the left here is a representation of what the new pole would look like. So the, the proposed facility will be compliant with all federal, state, and local building, electrical, structural, and regulatory requirements. Crown Castle will submit an application for a new conditional use permit and waiver to the City and County of Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting. If anyone has any questions, there's my last name. Basically, Visitation with a C at the end instead of a T. And then if anyone has any questions, feel free to email me. That's my email address. And I can also put it in the chat here. And that's, that would be it, unless anyone has any questions.
Any question for the board? Any question for the community? Senator, go ahead. Okay, stop sharing your screen so we can see you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Here we go.
The question I had, you said something about one camera?
Sorry?
You talked about a camera. What kind of camera?
Oh, no, no. Camera? I might have meant my camera. I'm not, I didn't. There's no camera for the facility.
Why is the reason for the re, changing the pole?
Essentially, the, the pole will allow not just one carrier to be on, on that one pole. The way the pole is designed right now, it only has enough room for one carrier. So the, the move of the pole not only allows So the move of the pole not only allows for additional antennas to be placed on the pole, but more carriers. So instead of needing to look for additional locations for additional towers, the pole will be pole-locatable, essentially.
Who's the owner of the property?
Uh, the property.
State, city, private?
It's private.
Okay, the reason why I ask you this is because you guys are going to put up another pole. You guys will give a lot of other carriers to use it. What is the community's benefit package for putting this in the community, in our community, even though it's on private property? Does Child Family Services benefit from the pole? Do the Humane Society, Ever Community that surrounds it?
Well, the Ever Community, yeah, the Ever Community would benefit from the increased access to the wireless coverage.
No, no, no. I'm talking about financial, not cell towers.
Oh, I.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about financial, like if you guys give me money to the residents in the area, like Child Family Services, Humane Society, you know, that kind of stuff. Because you guys always say you guys put up poles to better our services. Our services do suck in Ever Beach, so I don't know how much more better this is going to be. So that's the thing. People come in our community, year after year, from the Neighborhood Board and beyond, and Ever Beach benefit nothing. Now we need to ask these questions when you guys come in. What is it for the community besides just getting a cell reception?
Well, I don't have any knowledge of the lease with that property owner.
Any other questions for the board or community? Yeah, well, I echo what the senator said, you know. A lot of cell towers go up in their schools around the area just for bettering our cell service, but nothing goes to the school itself, Child Family Services. And you're saying there are going to be multiple carriers on it. So, you know, in that pack, you know, what he's talking about, a package. So anybody who wants to go on that pole, they should be able to either donate or something to the community or that area where that pole is being put up or relocated. That's the question, or if we could give us some answers about it.
No, firstly, I don't have any information on the leasing aspect of this project.
Okay, who's the owner?
Crown Castle.
Hey, sorry, everyone. This is Adrian Cottelan. I'm with Crown Castle. I can potentially take a stab at that question if that's all right, Chair. Yeah, so typically for these cell sites, whoever is the property owner does receive rent and compensation for the tower on their land rightfully, since we're taking space. The property owner, Child and Family Services, is already on board and agreed to the relocation. It's a project we've been working with their board for the last three years. I personally worked with their board and directors to make sure that the site was pono, out of the way, and more accessible. To your question about why are we adding more antennas and relocating the pole? I don't want to get too into the weeds here, but one reason is the current pole design that Shane had mentioned really only supports one carrier, which means you can't reach as many people, you can't access as many users. So that's one of the flaws with these older poles, which is why we're moving it, but keeping it the same height. As to the benefit to the community, most of the times this will cover the main area, but if you're asking about like specific monetary donations to, you know, schools or individual homeowners, that's not something that we do as a tower company, and none of our competitors or allies do that either. It's not something that's part of our business model. But a lot of it too is some of our towers, not necessarily this one, but some of our towers do support first responders, military, state, so those are some of the services we do provide, but not necessarily specific to this tower.
Thank you. You answered our question. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. And I give another sighting of a beach if you'd like, put up on pole too. Alrighty, thank you very much. Moving on to item five, resident and community concerns and community announcements. Please, we're going to open it up to the community first and then the board. So any community member has a concern or announcement, step up to the mic, state your name and concern or announcement.
Hello, Chair. My name is David Akki. And real quick, this is only thank yous to the first responders. Thank you to the state political politicians regarding the Senate, the House. As far as I see, the mayor, councilpeople. Special thanks to Kurt Pavela and City Councilman Toba. They're working on a project that I testified at CDR on a second reading this week regarding the movie industry, and I think it's in Capole. I hope you guys can look into that and support that. Due to thousands of jobs, okay? Last but not least, the board. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you folks, okay? Wayne, never see you long time. For that young handsome guy over there, brother, you did one good job, bro. Thank you so much, bro. And Rogers, you awesome, brother. Thank you. Thank you so much. About a clock. And to you too, I don't know who you guys are. Thank you. Okay, Micho, God bless you in the future. So thank you very much, and that's it.
Thank you.
Were you able to understand him? Mahalo. So that was my son Eric Blanco, and I'm Tara Rojas. And I just wanted to say as well, you know, just to all of you, just. So for, you know, Trey, Julie, John, Micho, Jeffrey, Alexander, John, Wayne. I know Jonah and Cory is not here, and Liam. So just, you know what, as he said, just to back, just continue with that. Just what are we going to do as a community? And just, I know it's in the other sections, but what kind of future are we leaving for our Kiki? As far as water, as far as land space, and as far as just, you know, well-being for, to live, just well-being? Because as we know, just the overdevelopment and what's happening right now on Pohakupuna Road, you know, fighting against the 21 cluster, that I look at it as that 21 cluster that at Ever Beach as a community really fighting against that, to stop that, that on a bigger scale, we have to come together as well, because if you're thinking of only 21 houses to be built, what type of effect on the water are we going to have when the whole Paseco Plan is going to be built? When the whole Kalailoa Master Development Plan is going to be built? You know, the overuse of our water and overcapacity. Mahalo.
Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to move to the board members. Let's start from the end. Alex, then John.
Jeffrey, can you keep up those slides? So I'm going to speak here on behalf from Alexander Gauss. I am a board member, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'll give some updates on the, there was some lead discussion last month, and I just want to follow up with that, with some visuals for that as well. So I just want to wait for when Jeffrey gets this first slide up. Oh, yeah, can you get that, Rojas? Thank you. No, you have the PowerPoint open, I believe. Yeah, there you go. This doesn't count towards my two minutes. So just real, I'm just going to fly through this because it's just a community concern and it's follow-up what we were discussing last time. So lead is extremely toxic, right? Any levels unsafe, especially for Kiki and Kapuna. We already know that within MCBH, within PRTF, excuse me, within the lower range training facility, there's high levels of lead. Our representatives from the Marine Corps have said that. A 2014 Environmental Vulnerability Assessment showed Bravo Range, just that one single range, and away from the berms to have 37,000 milligrams per kilo of lead. So it's highly contaminated within the range. We're already aware of that. Next. That's 185 times the limit for residential areas, just FYI. Can you go back one? Yeah, so Surf Rider, as we know, I'm just recapitulating a couple of things here. February 2022, Surf Rider found heavy lead levels in the berms fronting the range. That's the area highlighted in yellow. Hopefully you can see that. Up to 70 times the limit for residential areas. Next, please. So last year, at the behest of Representative Martinez and her Chief of Staff Tracy, or Cocky, I was asked to go out and spear some fish in front of the range, as well as collect some dust from two homes that are adjacent to the range. Those are the four orange points, and the two blue points are the homes, and the fish are on the right. So you can see those are Manini, Palani, and Uhu. These are all commonly consumed fish here in Hawaii, and that a lot of my neighbors fish for along myself out here in this area. Next, please. So looking at the results of those tests, we have lead detected in all four of those fish. All are way over the FAO limit that was set in 2023. The Palani, which is one of my favorite actually, is more than, it's 24 times the limit. So this is very concerning for me when I saw these, this is what I was not hoping to see. Unfortunately, as we know, last month, we were talking about it. Rep Martinez's office didn't actually share these results with us. She still refused. Reporters asked her for it. We asked her for it. Fortunately, the Marines were actually willing to share it with us. But next, I just want to let two more, couple more slides. The homes also had lead levels. A little bit more tricky here, but they were over the limit set for soil. And last slide, I believe. Oh, and I saw MCBH is only currently planning to retest the areas in front of the soil. They're not going to retest any of the fish or any of the neighboring, the neighboring homes or any of the parks. And for me, the fact that those animals, even though like the fish could have come from other areas or the homes could get lead from other sources, the fact that they all contain lead in the right next to firing range is ample reason to warrant additional testing in there. We've voiced this to Marines. They've ignored. You know, this is with heart, and even people above him, they've just basically ignored those recommendations and acted like these tests didn't even exist. I don't even know if they were discussed at this group meeting that John Clark was referring to earlier. And so lastly, this is the last slide coming here. It's just take home. We know that PRTF is highly contaminated. Lead is fine in all six of those samples. They suggest that lead might be migrating off the range, yet the Marines aren't actually testing outside of the berm. Thank you.
Thank you. John Rogers, go ahead. Okay, John Clark.
Hello, everyone. This message is from an event coordinator. It's an announcement for Alcohol. Events International, what says that in the body? It's going to Chair Tananas and the board. We'd like to inform the Ever Neighborhood Board that Events International has applied for a special liquor license at the Vai Kai Experience on Saturday, April 6, 2024. I'll repeat that date again, Saturday, April 6, 2024. The event in question is an event called the No Joke Smoke, and Events International will be the beverage concessionaire. And they have a layout attached. And basically, if you've been to the Vai Kai area, it's that big open space of land that's right in front of the kitchen door restaurant, or just over to the side of the kitchen door.
Thank you. Any other announcements or concerns, board members? I have one. There's some of one of our former board members requesting, and sorry, I think it was from Gentry. Speaking on Geiger Road, I think it's called. Kamakana, Kamakana, where you come out before the wastewater treatment plant. There were multiple accidents that were having, and Penny asked if, I think Gentry still had the road or they were going to do a road study, traffic study, it was a year already. And just yesterday, or the day, a couple of days ago, there was another bad accident there. So I don't know if Gentry or the city or the state can kind of push something through so we can get this light study, whatever it is, going? Because, you know, it's not going to take another death in our community to warn another light or speed hump or whatever it is. That is a very bad intersection there. When you drive past anybody, if you're going towards the Kamakana, I mean, on Geiger, going into the back road of Barber's Point, the two lanes going straight in, there's a left turn going into Kamakana, that street, but the people waiting there can't see, you know, they're looking left for the cars that's oncoming, coming out of Barber's Point or Kalailoa. And then they can't see the oncoming cars because of the other cars trying to turn in to Kamakana Road. So, yeah. So that's my, that was one of the concerns from one of our past board members and also community member. You have a concern or announcement? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Alan Cueto from Representative Alcos's office. We sent a letter to the City and County Department of Transportation about multiple places for speeding, you know, traffic mitigation, if they can assess stuff around like Ever Makai, Keone Ula Elementary. That was actually one of the items on there. And the response was they are communicating with, was it Gentry? Yeah, they're already communicating with Gentry, and they already said Gentry was supposed to put the traffic light in. There's going to be a town hall meeting at Kamakana at Huakale, and the Department of Transportation is supposed to be out there. So if you guys want to bring that up at that time also, you guys can, March 13th. So that's a response that we got from Representative Alcos's office. So, and if you guys get any other questions, just reach out to the office. We can give you guys update.
So are you saying that Gentry has already agreed to install the light? Or that they're in talks that they don't do need any?
They're already communicating with the Department of Transportation from the response that we got.
Okay.
So it is on the radar, and it was addressed. But like again I said, if you guys want to say anymore or support it, March 13 at the swimming pool at Huakale, they'll be out there.
Rep Alcos?
Six to seven, I believe.
Oh, three months ago, I talked to Debbie about that. And then at the same location, and maybe about six months prior to that as well. At the phase that they are in, it was in plan and design three months ago of building the traffic light and getting permits for it. So that's what the phase it is. They are right now, I can follow up, and which I'm going to be following up, how long it's going to take. She said that she's going to have to order all the materials from the mainland when it will get there. And there is numerous place along in Ever Beach. So if you guys want to know, there is probably about 20 different locations that we had community concerns that we put in.
On the city side, can we push the permit process quicker, being that that location already had multiple accidents and also a fatality?
That's one of my things that I was telling Debbie and as well as talking to City is that you cannot measure life, people dying already over there. It's almost like an emergency to get something out there. And we're putting the pressure, and definitely, yes, you can talk to the City and put more pressure on it.
Thank you very much. Okay, going back right now, last one. Anybody? Julie, go ahead.
I'm not speaking from the table, but this is just me as an individual. So I want to add to it, or not add, I guess tap Alex, what he was saying earlier, about how important it is for the military to be good neighbors. I know, you know, we talk a lot about the military. My home is a military house. My dad was in World War II. My husband joined the Guard and left for basic training when he was 17 from Pearl City High School. My mom and my stepdad retired from Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. So we are a military household. But as they said earlier, you know, if these are the things that are showing up on the tests and there's lead in there repeatedly, please can you guys be good neighbors? I know that they say the word pono, you guys come over, you guys come here every month. Thank you. But please be good neighbors and take these data tests and move forward with them in a fashion that we would move forward with them. Thank you.
Oh, you have something? Go ahead. Niman, announcement or concern?
Hello, Chair. Members of the board. My name is Coryo Sanction.
Hello, Chair, members of the board. My name is Coria Sanction, um, candidate House Representative District Forty. Um, I hold an annual tournament, Kiki Fishing Tournament. I think I'm on my fourth or fifth year at the Ever Beach Park, what you guys are talking about, Alex. I came in kind of late and it's, it's kind of concerning. Um, so there is radiation or effective fish there, right? Because I hold a, this is my fourth year there, holding a children's fishing tournament. And I stretch, stress to them, a catch and release. But some of the kids, they don't listen. They take it home. So is it safe? Uh, how do we find that out?
That's, that's exactly the question that I have.
Uh, yeah, I understand.
And that's what we're hoping the, the Marines will step up and, and lead that charge. To date, they haven't, but hopefully they will, or some of our representatives will help us try to get, get them to do that.
Sorry, I stepped in late. I just heard the ending part of it. So my fifth year is April. So it's coming up. So you know, what can we do? Any information? How do we uh, you know, attack this situation? Uh, can fill me in later, Alex and John?
Okay.
You know, to this uh, it's very concerning for me. So should I cancel my fifth year? It's a children's fishing tournament. Um, it's a catch and release. The only way they can enter this tournament is to clean the beach and bring rubbish back to the table. When they bring rubbish back to the table, they get a ribbon that shows them how to clean the ino, but I don't want them to eat the fish. That's all. So it's very concerning for me. Aloha.
Yeah, you know, don't cancel your tournament. They catch and release. Yeah, 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 yeah.
But you know, if I do that, then the parents will say.
Give them to me. I eat them. I eat them. Make sure, legal, but legal.
We need you as chair.
No wonder you tall, and I saw it.
Hey, John, go ahead.
So I just want to make a point of clarification here. Uh, one of the things I think we should also consider, and again, I'm not, I'm not doubting the data or anything like that, but it's uh, Alex, remember Alex, I, I would ask, you know, as a scientist, we have to remember, we don't have a control for this part uh, of the data that you're discussing. Um, and it's well known that that stretch of, of the beach going all the way past Hau Bush is one of the most heavily fished areas uh, on this island. So there's a lot of lead sinkers out there uh, in that, in that area. So it just, you know, as we go for, forward, we're all having a good conversation about this. But that is a heavily fished area and there's lead, I'm sure, all up and down that coast.
Can I uh, jump in there, Chair, please?
Oh, go ahead, Chair.
Yeah, um, I would, I would just reply to that, that uh, agreed, there's a number of sources of lead. Could be Pearl Harbor, could be the range, could be lead weights, but there'd have to be a lot of them. What I would say is all arguments lead to the same conclusion. We gotta do follow-up testing. It's the only way. And um, that's what we're asking the Marine Corps to be good neighbors and include that as part of their tests. We would be delighted if they're partnering with DOH. You know, the Marine Corps has been concerned about uh, jurisdiction. Can they go and test off the range? Given their close partnership with the Hawaii Department of Health, I'm sure they can get the needed, the needed authorization to take those samples, uh, new dust samples, new fish samples. Whenever you're not sure about test results, the rule is do it again immediately, especially when the health of the children are at stake. So let's not wait. Let's do it now.
So when you catch your fish, go with a metal detector. Beep beep. Oh, Mitch.
Mitch, Mitch, just one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Okay, I just remembered this. Uh, there's gonna be a cleanup tomorrow at the City and County on North Road, eight thirty. Or yeah, Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday morning, eight thirty uh, on North Road. I'm not sure what part of North Road, but past Campbell High School, probably going towards Iroquois, um, eight thirty, Saturday morning. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to other monthly reports. We've got Hunt VA Clinic.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tony Gaston with the Hunt Companies. And uh, if you remember, we did turn over the VA clinic over to the Veterans Administration. So they are now in there getting everything activated and they are still on target to open in April of this year. So still going. Uh, as for the other improvements, Hunt is still working with state DOE now. We were actually able to finalize a draft memorandum of understanding. So we can go in there and finally finish up all the construction. So we can get all that done and finish opening the rest of the roads. It's being reviewed by the Deputy Superintendent at the DOE right now. So after we get all that completed, we hope to get everything signed and get back started on construction in April of this year. That's my quick update. Any questions?
Thank you. Any question for the board? Any questions for the community? John, you got something?
Yeah, I just, so you work for Hunt, right?
Yes.
Is there any way that we could get um, um, a presentation on all that Hunt is doing, especially with Roosevelt Avenue? And because I, I use that road every morning. It's, there's a lot more traffic than there's ever has been um, on that road coming from Eva going to Kapalae. And then of course, so and, and then there's a lot more users, a lot of bikes, a lot of kids going to school. I see them every morning on their little electric bikes, trying to weave through. And so I'm just interested in what Hunt is, the plans for Hunt. Yeah.
I can do that. Uh, and just before I begin, just so you know, Barbara's Point is thirty-eight hundred acres. Hunt is five hundred fifty of the thirty-eight hundred. So
I realize.
And we're in that core area. So we are contributing to a lot of the roadway improvements and I'll be able to explain that to you. So I'll take care of that.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, yes. I wasn't gonna say anything at first, but since you mentioned the other roadway improvements, if I could make a small suggestion, we've talked about this before. And and um, Shane Greenland echoed my sentiments with regard to PP Road and the signs in the middle of the sidewalk. Well, not in the middle, but a good third of the way in prohibiting the Kiki from riding their bikes and walking along that sidewalk. Kind of the same thing in that area fronting the uh, the VA, the new VA Center. Those sidewalks, I think you said before, are five or six feet wide.
Six feet.
Six feet. The base of the streetlights are about twenty to twenty-four inches. Uh, so they take up, um, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's two feet, then they take up about two fifths of the, of the width of the sidewalk there. So as you move along into other developments, could that be something that maybe we look at and move in those? Because when it takes up that much of the sidewalk, people that do want to ride their bikes, and I know there may be a bike lane or something like that there. But um, for walking and and other stuff, it's going to be a true blue zone area. I think that there should be greater consideration given to pedestrians and and, and, and small bikers.
That is something I can bring up. We are, because we are building everything to city and state standards.
Understood. Thank you, Tony.
See no other questions. Thank you, Tony. Oi, excuse me. Oh, go ahead.
I know I have to address it to you, but this is for Hunt, and I have a question. So as I'm listening to this whole meeting where we find out that there's lead in the ocean, in the ea, in the fish, and we're talking about, you know, Kiki speaking up for our water, we're hearing about the need for uh, traffic management, you know, because of the accidents, you know, the more traffic. So just to put this in consideration, think about in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, what's it gonna be like when Hunt, you know, and I don't see Haseko here, so I'm gonna put it in with Hunt, with Hunt and HCDA continuing to develop and develop and develop. We're talking about all the issues now about traffic, you know, about accidents, about contamination. And it's very interesting that I brought this. It says the living treasures of the Hawaiian Islands. It says this part. You know, they were gonna get rid of it, but it talks about everything. And it's really interesting because when you think about the living treasures, treasures is not money. Treasures is living heirs, the living people, and the living Kiki of the Hawaiian Islands. And right now in the legislature, as I see our representatives here, SB three, three, two, seven tomorrow. Uh, uh, it, actually SB two, six, one, seven, the long overdue bill, talking about housing, having uh, you know, preventing foreigners from buying. SB three, three, two, seven was just passed by regarding our water. So that sea worm can have the authority to uphold the public treasure by. So to think about that. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Gentry Homes. Anybody from Gentry for an update? Not yet. Aseko?
Hi there, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a quick update, everybody. Let me share a screen. See if I can find it. Okay, can everybody see? Is it showing?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so. Okay, so thank you, everybody. Um, I do have a couple of quick updates for you guys. Uh, we started actually building Ko'opata Huakale Neighborhood quite a few years ago. But we have about thirty-two lots, and you can kind of see them up here. If you see my mouse, um, that have been sitting for a while. So we are actually ready, readying to get those lots ready to finish up. And we're calling this area Kekai Nani Series in the Ko'opata Huakale Neighborhood. This will be the last section of thirty-two ocean view, oceanfront view home sites that are going to be done in that area. And secondly, so you guys all know about the Waikai Waterfront Recreational Facility here. We are actually installing what we call Waikai Aqua Venture. It will be kind of like a playground on the water. It's gonna be traditional inflatable bouncy houses with floating obstacle courses. So it should have like, things like peaks, monkey bars, slides, these kind of wiggle bridges and balance beams, planks and hurdles. So they're all gonna kind of inter, interlock on the lagoon area. And there's gonna be a larger course that has about twenty components. Then we're also gonna have a smaller course for the kids' circuit, for the younger Kiki and the neighborhoods. So we're gonna actually start getting those ready. And then you guys should start to hear some ads on, on there. I'm actually going to be inviting some of the high school teams out to do a child community run along with some of the other nonprofit groups in the Ever Beach area um, shortly. But we're hoping to get that open for you guys in a little bit. And then once we have a firm date, I'll go ahead and update you guys again. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay, go ahead, Alex.
Thanks for that presentation, Lisa. It's great to see an update there. I was wondering on those homes on the
Stop sharing.
Oh, sorry. Okay, wait, let me figure out how to stop share.
Yeah, I was just curious on the, on the uh, you don't have to stop sharing while I ask the question. On that northern stretch where the new homes are finally going to start being developed.
Yes.
I'm, I'm wondering if you've had any convers- I mean, obviously, there's a lot of uh, what is it, houseless? Unhoused people having camps right there in front and, and I imagine that would be uh, you know, hit, a negative hit to the home value. And I was just wondering if, if you guys have taken that into consideration? Are there any talks underway to, about that issue or anything? I was just curious.
Well, that area is on land that we actually dedicated over to, I mean, we dedicated nine acres over to the city to expand Oneula Beach Park. We don't actually own that area anymore. So it is basically the city and DLNR that's going out there to do enforcements. Um, not something that's actually in our control. So.
Okay, I, I, I didn't know that wasn't your land. I was just curious if you guys were trying to engage because it could potentially bring your property values down, your profits. So, okay, thank you.
Sorry, but I, I know that's kind of an issue all over the island. So I know that there needs to be more services and things brought out. But yeah, it's not something that we actually can do anything about.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any question for the community? Okay, we got two.
So Tara Rojas, I would like to say that, you know, I think there is something you can do. And that would be just to really think of people over profit. If you're wondering why there are homeless, you know, in front of that area, if you're wondering, if you think about it, Kekai Nani, I would like to say that just because it's been in existence for fifty years, the continued desecration and overdevelopment, that doesn't mean it's correct and to continue to do. So when you think about this, you are planning and that you're so happy about a new aqua uh, inflatable house on the water, when we're in a water crisis. Your thirty-two Kekai Nani are upscale luxury homes. Who's gonna be able to afford that? Yeah, eight hundred forty-one residences that you are, all are planning from the meeting at the town hall and nine hundred fifty hotel rooms, and your CEO does not know the history of Oneula. That right in the middle of your lagoon, that's, that was the ebi of Namahana that was found that should have stopped your development. And the fact that you destroyed all but one salt bed should have stopped the development. And the fact that our vi, that we broke the water table, that should have stopped your development. And this has to stop now. Yes, it's uncomfortable to be the only one to come, continue speaking up because everything, because if you're benefiting and you can afford to go into your, you know, into your water park or your Waikai or your wave pool or your restaurants, it doesn't mean that it's correct. And so this has to stop now.
Thank you very much. Yes, you got something? Go ahead.
Uh, aloha, I'm not against the Waikai, but believe it or not, she's one hundred percent true. Okay, um, Lisa, can you hear me, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, quick question. You know, I'm for the children. I have six events throughout the year for the children of Ever Beach, yeah? I put in so much time for the Kikis. Um, I just have a question. You're building that water park that stand up floats. I seen it the other day. The question to you is, is that water safe? Has it been tested? Because it's, it was a marina and it's stagnant for five, six years. There's no outlet. Um, I looked at it and the edge was just green and slimy. Um, have you tested that water just to be safe? Um, nothing against Waikai. It's, it's the children's health that I care for.
Actually, we regularly test the water and we have been testing the water um, basically every month since we started planning for a marina and we started digging. Uh, this water that's in Waikai Lagoon, it actually has this plant called Kara that's on the bottom that eats up all the nutrients. It is a brackish water area. And I know in the past, we have had our scientists come out and kind of explain the water quality issues are over there. So what you see on the sides of the lagoon, that's non-toxic um, things that are there that normally occurs in brackish water. So it's something that we actually monitor and it's actually very safe to be in there.
Okay, great. Is there something I can show the community written statement about the testing of that water?
We actually post all of our
Um, I've been in a surf club for so many years. I've grown up on that beach. And um, I just wanted to know if it's safe, you know, that water, that's all.
We actually post all of our water quality data on our huakalefacts.com website, and we have been doing that for years. So anytime you have a question and you want to meet with us, you're more than welcome to schedule a meeting and we can go one-on-one and we can go in actual, in detail.
Okay, perfect. Mahalo.
Okay.
Or you should tell them before you guys turn them in, go over there, go catch the opai.
Actually, we even tested the fish in there. The fish is really clean.
There's no fish there.
Okay, opai.
Mitch.
Sorry. Oh, sorry.
But we have tested the, we actually have golden sunfish or tilapia in there. We've tested those and they're super clean.
Just clarification for for people who was actually from the community a long time would know that that La Presty sued Aseko. Aseko had been ongoing testing that water. Our member Mitchell and our family went on the original swimming. So yes, that water is safe, but if you don't know, it's because you wasn't in the community long enough. Thank you.
Any other questions for the community or board? Yeah, Alex, go ahead.
Hey, Lisa, sorry, one more question here from Alexander. Um, I'm, I heard that there, there, there might be an opportunity to actually open the road up to White Plains, and I wasn't at the town hall. Can you speak to that at all?
We've been trying to do something like that um, to make some kind of pathway for everybody to get there a little bit easier. Once we have a finalized plan and a timeline, I'll come back for an update.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, see no other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Dr. Horton. Yeah, I'm John, John Rogers. Sorry. I think Horton will be down for that um, uh, the water catchment, BC, and I think next month, they're gonna give an update on that. For your, for your, yeah, just to answer your question for last month. Will it be on? I think Tracy will be on. Okay. Moving on to government official, US Marine Corps Base Hawaii, duty officer.
All right, uh, before I get to the announcement, just want to have a couple of quick comments. Um, I appreciate the comments on the recognition uh, for the five Marines that died in California. Uh, thank you. Uh, Chair for the March Agenda, it'd be possible to get some time. Be possible to get some time if March works, uh, to get some people that know more about the range, you know, than myself as a public affairs guy. Uh, to come give a presentation, uh, here is, how do I do that? Get time on the.
Okay, March, just like that. March. Presentation.
And, uh.
Key.
The last question I have is, I see the Military Affairs Committee on the agenda every month, but. When do you meet and then is it possible to? For MCBH to attend? I guess that's my question.
I was just going to comment that we had, uh, Mike Plowman on as a fill-in for a month and he created that. Committee and I don't think it's ever, ever actually met.
Okay.
So I don't know. Is it, okay, Julian Lee.
It's, it, it meets on an ad hoc basis to answer your question.
Okay, is it like? Okay.
Yeah, as Julie says, more ad than hoc, but it, it, a lot of our committees, most of them don't have a standing meeting time, uh, but. Because this is moving along much more quickly, um, so we don't have a standing one, but maybe that's something that we should start up.
Okay, yeah, I think, uh, Marine Corps Base Hawaii would be open to hosting you, you know, if you want to come over to the, the winward side, um, have a chat with, you know, Colonel Bevan, uh, I think that's perfectly reasonable. So. Whatever time works for you guys. I know it's hard to get everyone's schedules aligned. But we're, we're open to it, so.
There's always virtual too.
Okay. Colonel Bevan likes face to face, so I mean, I, I do what the boss says, you know, for them. Okay, so I think considering everything we've heard. And the discussions in the past hour, hour and a half or so, I think this will be good news. Uh, we're going to sample this month. Is this month, uh, so we, we finally reached the finish line. And the final puzzle piece, if you will, is getting everyone's schedules aligned, which I just alluded to. Mainly with the scientists that Red Martinez's office was helpful and getting integrated into the planning process. Uh, they're in semester at their schools, um, so getting them aligned. Once we got that in place, we're going to begin the sampling. Upon completion of this SAP, we're going to share the results with the public and continue to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the state. Partners in the community to inform the next steps. What I'm saying is there will be more testing. MCBH is already talking about it. Uh, but we can't do it alone. So we will need your input. I think the military affairs committee is a mechanism. I think the neighborhood board is a mechanism, uh, but that's what we're, we're trying to get at. Okay? Um, this SAP is going to test three thousand feet of shoreline from the berm to the high water mark. Where the presence of metals and potential migration pathways. That's what we're after in this first test. Once we get the data, regardless of what it is, good, bad and different, right, we're going to share it. We're going to use it to inform our decision-making on what the next steps are, which is what we're going to work towards, I think, as a community, Marine Corps community team. And then lastly, once we get the dates nailed down for this SAP, members of the community are welcome to come observe. So once we get the dates, we'll give you a map, a little map chip, uh, with the observation areas. Give you access instructions. I think my last question for the chair is what's the best way? To get that information to both. The board, but also people that attend the board. Is it just an email to you? Is it? Announcement on a webpage?
Just email it to me and then I'll get it out to all the board members.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I've got tonight.
Good?
Good.
All right. Any question for the board?
Yeah, yes.
Go.
Uh, thanks so much for that update. A couple of quick questions. One is, um, have any other berms been moved back besides Foxtrot? And, um, so that's question one, like was Charlie, were Echo or Delta moved back? And, um, last year, uh, your predecessor, uh, Lieutenant McDonough said that when they were going to move Foxtrot back. Uh, they were going to. Where the berm once was, they were going to remove, they were going to test for lead there as far deep as it goes. Remove that soil and lay fresh soil. So my question is, have you moved further berms back? And are you going to be testing fresh soil?
Okay, so. We have moved Fox back. As we, as you just said, and we took it, we rebuilt it, we hydroseated it with a bunch of stuff. Uh, and foliage, uh, but C through E ranges, which are all the pistol ranges, not the rifle ranges. Those are in place. So when we do this SAP this month, it will be as it is currently positioned. There are plans, however, to move C through E back. Kind of aligned with Fox. But that, those will not be moved until the SAP is complete. And if necessary, uh, you know, follow on testing. So. No, we're not testing fresh dirt. We're testing PRTF as it currently sits today. I'm sorry, what was the first?
Does that include Foxtrot? Because Foxtrot, your predecessor said they're laying fresh dirt.
The, the entirety of the shoreline frontage of PRTF will be tested.
Understood, but the Foxtrot part, can you just confirm yes or no? Did they lay fresh dirt?
I, I'd have to double check.
Okay, appreciate that for next one. And then one more question takeaway before your presentation next week is, uh, can you, we, we requested from the FAA. Any, any correspondence with the Marine Corps about the vertical danger zone? And the FAA told us there was no correspondence they could find ever. About the, uh, vertical danger zone between the Marine Corps and FAA. Uh, we subsequently followed up again and, uh, they still can't find anything. So if you could, with your presentation, any. Any documentation you have showing that there's a written formal official agreement with the Marine Corps and the FAA. That says that, you know, whatever, what, so that's question with that you have that. And question two is. Tell us what method is the Marine Corps using? Uh, what method of safety is the Marine Corps using, um, for planes that are transiting through that area? Appreciate that. And we can talk.
What was the, what was the first question?
The first question was, um, uh, do you have any documentation between the FAA and the US Marine Corps?
Right, I've got that one, but.
Yep.
The one, like the very first one you asked. I don't know if I answered it.
Oh, about Foxtrot and the fresh dirt. Yeah, did they lay fresh dirt at Foxtrot? Because you will be testing Foxtrot. I know it's three thousand feet of the shore, but that's a part of it. And that also came back the most, the highest during the first test that you.
Okay, so just to clarify, I can't speak for the FAA.
Yep, yep.
But, um, yes, we can, we can definitely.
Any documentation we're looking for.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions for the community? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Is there anything the community would like to get out of the brief in March?
Cory. Go ahead.
Any like additional, yeah, I'm, I'm just taking notes. So if you have a, anything you want to see in the brief next month, that I can take a note of, anything or?
Look through the mic.
Yeah, just, um, it's basically, you know, um, readings, you know, that you can show us and. There's a lot of questions among the community, that's why.
Okay.
Especially the parents that. That entered the tournament, it's like, can we eat this, you know?
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You got something? Okay, go ahead.
I have a question. If you guys are removing dirt from, could you present where you guys moving the dirt to and how you guys? And what dirt are you guys bringing back in so that we know? That the contamination is handling well.
Yes, I'll, I'll give you a surface level answer and then I will be sure to give you a more in-depth answer either next month as part of this brief or whatever. But when we move the dirt, the majority of the dirt stays on the facility. The, the lead that is extracted from the berms is recycled on island via contract. Uh, and this is all contracted work. It's not Marines doing the work. It's contracted with on island. Which agencies, uh, or businesses, uh, to come to the work. Uh, so that's the surface level answer. Uh, write down your question. I'll get you a more in-depth answer at the, in the brief.
Go ahead.
Speaking of testing and the soil, I just wanted to bring it to light just because especially in the legislator now legislative session now too. About, you know, even testing the soil with like the insects, you know, like the fire ants, like the coconut rhinoceros beetle and just other invasive pests. So just. Where, especially if it's a contract, they're like, do they know where they're, you know, where is it coming from in addition to where is it going to? Yeah, so mahalo.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I really appreciate you being here as well and having the conversations on a, on a human level. Um, I, I just wanted to emphasize, I think, you know, we've spoken about fish and some of the caveats of, of testing that and those things. And we can talk about this in future meetings as well, hopefully, but you know. We've seen footage of when people fire into those berms of, of clouds of dust, plumes going in the air. And I live just downwind of that. And all my neighbors do as well. And so I, I just really want to emphasize the need to monitor. The air particulate matter coming off of the range and that, and be testing that for lead. I feel like that got lost in the fish conversation, but that, you know, I live right there. My kids live right there, my neighbors live. So I just want to emphasize that.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to US Navy? Danny.
The community, uh, Danny Hayes, Navy Region Hawaii. Full report in earlier. Um, I'll just, uh, read.
Okay, good, good to go.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll just read a couple of the bullets, um, real quick and then I'll take, uh, whatever answers, uh, you all have. Uh, so the Joint Task Force Red Hill and the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill hosted a transition open house, uh, yesterday evening. Um, it was at the Kehe Lagoon Memorial Park. Uh, they were there to share information about the residual fuel removal. And to, um, speak on the, uh, the transition between the Joint Task Force and the Navy Closure Task Force. Also, uh, the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill launched its new website on, uh, the January twenty-fifth. And, um, I can plug that into the, uh, chat block here, uh, but I also sent that. It's, uh, Navy Closure Task Force, all one word. Dot Navy dot mil, M I L. Um, the inter-agency drinking water system team, uh, developed a long-term, uh, drink, uh, long-term monitoring plan. Uh, to monitor the drinking water. Uh, now, we've, we've spoken about this, um, before over the last year or so. Um, and we presented the, um, where the website is so the public can go see those readings. Uh, I also wanted to offer this update. Uh, the Department of the Navy has surged personnel and resources and expertise to the area. To respond to, uh, the recent reports of, um, about the concerns about the quality of the water here on the Navy water system. So, um, they're, they're just coming because they've heard, uh, the community's concerns. So they're bringing them here to do the testing. Um, currently the water's still meeting, uh, federal and state safety drinking water standards. And, uh, those are all online for everyone to, uh, be able to see. Now, uh, um, also they're, they're having their, uh, long-term monitoring booth. At the, uh, Capalina Night Market. That'll be on the fourteenth, February fourteenth. So Wednesday from, uh, four PM to eight PM. Uh, pending any questions, uh, that's all that I've got for today.
Any question for the board? John, go ahead.
Yes. Hey Danny, uh, thanks for your presentation. So, um, I'm still asking questions about the, uh, the Westlock Annex and I just want to. Keep on, I'm going to keep on bringing it up until we get a presentation because I've asked several times for. A basic presentation and really all I want to know is, you know, that the project came out in like twenty twenty. Um, and it was supposed to begin in twenty twenty-two and it hasn't began, begun. And it's going to be a major change in the whole Ever community. It's going to fence off a large part. It's going to add a road. And so we just want to know when, when the project's going to start? Who, who's, who's in, who's in charge of the project? Um, you know, is it going out the bid? Um, uh, what are the steps in the process to build the road and fence area? What the fence is going to look like? How you guys are going to build the road, whether you're going to follow city, county, state, uh, complete streets, um, ordinances? Uh, uh, just all that kind of stuff. We just, because it's going to be a part of our community and it's major change. And so I, I really think it's, um, important that the Navy provide us just a basic presentation of. When that's going to happen. Now, if it's not going to happen, then I guess you don't have to have a presentation, but I haven't even been able to, uh, been able to get like, oh, it's not going to happen. Or yes, we're planning it in two years. And so, so we can just have, because it was supposed to start two years ago. So it's two years later, it still hasn't started. And I know COVID might have had something to do with that. But it, it'd just be really great to get that information so the community can understand that major change that's going to take place, if it's going to take place. So if we can get confirmation that it's even going to happen, then, uh, and then of course follow, um, that down the road if it is. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And, um, yeah, I appreciate you, um, asking the question. I continue to write it down. Um, truthfully. There's a lot of, um, a lot of our public affairs folks get pulled into different directions because of, um. Recent events and whatnot. Uh, like I said last night, there were a lot over at the, uh, Kehe Lagoon. But, um, we'll continue to ask the question, hopefully next month. Have somebody who can, uh, speak to it.
Alex, you got something?
Thanks, Danny. I just want to follow up on that too, because I know that Victor Flynn responded to John's inquiry via email and said. That he had given it in a presentation about several years ago. And I, even if it's just repeating that, because there's so many new people here that might not have been present for that presentation. And I'm sure there's updates, like even that, we appreciate, he can recycle it. Doesn't need to start from scratch. So. I'd appreciate that as well. It's one of the second John's notes. Thank you, Danny.
All right, thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Any question for the community? We got one. Hold on, Danny, go one.
Tara Rojas. This is for the Titas that are still, you know, suffering the effects, whether they're here on island or not. And I know the previous meetings plural been asking you, what have you all been doing in, in addition to? Uh, just keep telling us that you're testing that it falls within levels. Just keeping in mind that the levels are super high. Now, if I were to survey this. Pearl Harbor Peninsula currently still being affected. The people are having rashes, you know, when they're bathing, whether they're drinking, when the, the children are accidentally ingesting bath water. Little children now. That they're suffering effects, gastroenteral rash, going to the emergency room. Would you drink from this? From hickam, this is currently going on right now, still, hickam. To bathe, to drink, everything, all the youth laundry. And also. Navy, you're just basically your Navy water line. Would you drink from this? Or are you just going to just keep saying, just keep testing? So until you are currently affected, whether. Air, because it's not only in the water, air quality as well. So what are you doing? Have you provided water buffaloes? Have you changed out the water heaters, the hot water heaters? What have you been doing other than giving us the answer about testing? Mahalo.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, where I work is on the Navy water system and I make coffee every morning. I'm not concerned about the water because I know it's safe.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Danny. Moving on to US Army.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Major Bonglo, the representative for the United States Army. I've got two announcements for everyone tonight. First, the February Job Fair. Will occur on HMR, which is the Haila Manu Military Reservation Youth Center on February twentieth. Starting at eight thirty AM and ending at two PM. And then the second thing I have for you guys tonight is the United States Army Garrison published. The February Training Advisory for the Island of Oahu. I did print out, printouts for everybody there are there on the back table. Um, so some things that you guys can expect in Hawaii, uh, the Army will continue training at East Range. With small arms, uh, blank fire. From the first to the sixteenth of February during the day only. And then aviation training from the fifth through the ninth, uh, during midnight hours till about eleven fifty-nine, uh, PM. And then on the fourth through the seventh. We will also do multi-purpose range complex live fire, which includes artillery and mortars. And then some artillery fire during the night, uh, from the sixth to the eighth, the fourteenth through the fifteenth, and then again at the end of the month. From the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. Depending on your questions, that's all I have for everyone tonight.
Thank you. Any question for the board? Any question for the community? We got one, go ahead.
I do have a question and I, I just have to keep bringing up, you know, to light these injustices that have been happening, continue. So just the other day, uh, what was, uh, S, a Senate bill? I actually forgot to write that number down, but it was just deferred. It was in the water and land meeting. And which the Army was to prepare for transition back into. You know, out of their position, Makua Valley. And just to show you, you know, just for example, so if you can bring this back, you know. Know how, but where their leases are up in two thousand twenty-nine and they said, you know. Okay, we have these three choices. Now they're going to bring up that they still want to continue their leases. And it literally was, there was a bill for preparing for the transition. Out of Army hands, back to Makua Valley. And they're even going to give it back to the original inhabitants that, or the people that were there. They were kicked out of Makua Valley for the Army. And did you know that just the other day, that bill was deferred indefinitely? So this is kind of injustice still happening. Mahalo.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thank you very much.
Chair, sorry, I had one quick question.
Go ahead.
Uh, just, just as part of the discussion that we're having with the Marine Corps, um, can you confirm next month, um, whether, uh, Schofield, uh, activates its, uh, restricted area under the special use airspace, uh, when small arms are being fired? So let me repeat that. Does Schofield activate, uh, the restricted area, which is part of the special use airspace when small arms are being fired?
I can ask and confirm and then we'll give you a brief next month.
Yep, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to US Representative Ed Case. Mr., go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to submit our quarterly report, which I placed in the chat, but I just want to explain for those that, uh, don't have access to a computer or are sitting there on, uh, live there at the library. Uh, there's just a couple of points to be raised, uh, one of which is, uh, on his website, case.house.gov, you can see the end of the year 2023, uh, report, uh, which was also mailed to households in the first congressional district. Yeah. Also, he has a link to, uh, one of his, um, presentations. He had five talk stories on the first week of January, the start of the new year. Uh, and then you can hear from him, uh, the first of, uh, several videos on those, uh, talk stories, town halls, if you will. Um, I'll be producing, uh, the second, the sequel, more in detail of, uh, those five talk stories. Yeah. Um, also in December, we made a couple of announcements, uh, which actually pertains to, um, the EVA area. Yeah. Uh, the Congressman, uh, announced his nominations to the four service academies, uh, West Point, Air Force, Navy and the Merchant Marine. Yeah. Uh, the 35 names that he forwarded to those four uh, service academies, one comes from Campbell High School. Yeah. A student by the name of Thomas Wall, W A H L, Thomas. He was nominated to West Point. So, uh, someone from Campbell High School, hopefully will be, uh, under consideration by the Army for placement at West Point. Yeah. The other announcement is the winner of his, uh, Congressional App Challenge, which he holds, uh, every year for his congressional district. Yeah. And the winner once again is Dream House EVA Beach, the charter school. It's a sophomore. The young lady's name is Jaylen Rabago, R A B A G O, Jaylen. J A Y L E N sophomore at, uh, Dream House EVA Beach. She won first place. Yeah. In that Congressional App Challenge. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Congressman continues to see how we can work with his colleagues in the House to see if we can finalize the federal budget for the current fiscal year that we're in. Not to mention the budget that they're supposed to be working on for fiscal year 2025, which begins on October 1st of this year. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, open to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Right here. Yep. Go ahead. Uh, thank you, Nestor. Appreciate it. Uh, I just wanted to, um, say that, uh, we appreciate, um, Congressman Ed Case's leadership, um, regarding all the issues related to the range that were discussed tonight. Um, I think it got lost earlier, um, when one of the community members, I think Ms. Rojas asked the question. Uh, Congressman Case has actually been in, uh, conversation on behalf of the community with, um, top uh, leadership in the Pentagon about these concerns. He's aware of the surface danger zone I presented today. He's reviewed it with his experts. He's determined it's worth engaging with top military brass to figure out, um, how to, how to, how to deal with this. So I just wanted to say that we appreciate that and it should be noted that, um, he's working on behalf of the community and, and we, we see it and we, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman is a fault. And refers to, the board member refers to, uh, specifically, we had sent a letter dated January 31st. Lieutenant General Edward D. Banta, Deputy Commandant, Commandant, Installations and Logistics Based in the Pentagon. The Congressman sent 15 questions to Lieutenant General with regard to his concerns regarding the Po'oula Range Training Facility. If and when the Marine Corps answers those 15 questions and if we're allowed to share it, we will share it with you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and the general community.
Thank you. Any other questions for the board? Questions for the community, for the Congressman? See none. Thank you, Nestor.
Mr. Chairman.
Take care. Okay, moving on to Mayor's Rep.
Hello, Chair and members of the board. Um, Keha Lani Poo, Deputy Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and Mayor's Rep. Um, I'll just share one highlight. So we have the Mayor's Newsletter on the table over there, I believe. Uh, one highlight to share is that, um, we're bringing back the Hula Show. I don't know if you guys remember Kola Hula Show. So this one's going to be called Kilohana and it'll be offered at the Waikiki Shell. I think from Sundays to Thursdays, um, in partnership with the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement. There are some other highlights in the newsletter as well. And then I do want to share, um, so the Honolulu Zoo has been nominated for first time, uh, best zoo in America by USA Today. Um, so between now, I think until March 4th, the public can go online at honoluluzu.org to find out how to vote. Um, right now we're in third place, um, but the Enterprise Services in the zoo is really pushing for Hakua for support. So please vote for the zoo. Okay. Okay. So issues from last month, um, let me see. First one, Pohaku Puna Road Cluster Project. So a resident raised concerns about the building project on Pohaku Puna Road, uh, regarding many homes being built and land degradation. Resident asked if there's anything that can be done to decrease the number of homes being built. Uh, response from our Department of Planning and Permitting, DPP. So DPP shares the same community concerns about the proposed development of 21 dwellings on a shoreline lot in the special management area and possible degradation of the land. DPP is requiring an environmental impact statement due to these concerns. Um, an EIS has not yet been submitted for DPP's review. Now, if the EIS is accepted, it's a prerequisite for an SMA major permit, which is reviewed by DPP and then goes to City Council for approval. There'll be a DPP hosted public hearing as well as city, city council hearings. So these are opportunities to, you know, voice your concerns, um, if it gets past the EIS process. Um, and then the process will then be followed by a cluster permit. Reducing the number of proposed units is a possible outcome of these future reviews. Those decisions will be made as formal applications come in and technical review of the project against the standards of review are completed. So DPP encourages everyone who's concerned to review ROH Chapter 25 to understand what DPP and the City Council will be reviewing the project against. Uh, second concern, Po'oula, um, it was just raised last month that there was, uh, there was an article in Civil Beat regarding a potential, uh, a report and, uh, uh, or testing. And was there any way that a community could get a copy of these results or that it could be made public by the community? So the city didn't have anything to do with that evaluation and so, um, are unable to provide any information. Uh, PAPPE, PAPPE Road sign concerns. So that one was raised again, um, regarding the signs and, uh, safety for pedestrians. Right? Uh, so DTS resubmitted the response, I believe I shared back in November. Um, about the sidewalk being six feet and that ADA requires three to four feet, oh, three feet. Um, ADA requires three feet for pedestrian and ADA access. And so the signs that are existing there are about two to three to four I'm sorry, three to four feet for pedestrian or wheelchair access is, is needed to be in compliance with ADA requirements. Um, so those signs are either two to three feet off of the curb. So meet those requirements. Given that though, DTS has issued a work order, a paint and sign work order, PSWO, to the Department of Facility Maintenance. So they do the sign, um, installation. So they have submitted a work order asking to relocate and remove some of the existing signs closer to the curb. According to this report, they haven't finished yet. So, um, for status regarding the relocation of the signs, please contact DFM. I'll give you guys a number, 808-768-3621 or 808-768-3622 and reference PSWO 14358. I can also reach out to the Director and Deputy of, uh, Facilities Maintenance. And so can these guys over there? Okay. Uh, DTS, so this one also came up earlier this evening. Kamakana Community Association Board of Director Member Kurt Bozinski requested help in getting additional mitigation methods or measures for speeding on Keone Ula Boulevard and Kamakana Street, where we've had multiple accidents in a recent one. Um, so DTS did an investigation and completed it regarding the speeding concerns, uh, which included a review of the area's traffic collision history, speed surveys and a site inspection. Uh, their review did not find any trends related to speeding in the past three years. However, speed surveys found that speeding is occurring on Keone, Keone Ula Boulevard in the easterly direction and on Kamakana Street in both directions. As such, DTS will request the assistance of HPD to monitor the area and to consider placing a speed feedback trailer. In addition, a site inspection observed missing faded and defaced signs on Keone Ula Boulevard. Um, so DTS will issue a work order to the same department, Department of Facility and Maintenance to replace the signs that are in need of maintenance. For status on this, uh, task, PSWO 32055, and you can contact DFM at the same numbers I gave previously. And that's all I have for this month.
Any question for the board? Alex and then John.
Thank you. Thank you, Keha. Um, I also wanted to thank you for the park, attending the Parks Committee meeting last week and all your, your wonderful input. I really appreciate your, your leadership. Um, I, I wasn't really clear. So we had the, the one issue of that Assing Park and Eva Mahiko Park receive water that comes off ponds in the golf course. Um, that in the summer months, they can have issues with their pumps. And so then those parks end up not getting the water and they can go really dry. Um, and I, and I know that we had spoken about, uh, requesting, uh, presentation by Enterprise Services to talk about how that actually works so that we as the Parks Committee can understand and then be able to take additional. So I just couldn't remember if we left it that I, I want to like officially ask if you could help us get that presentation from them. And we're also speaking with our friend over here from the Board of Water Supply. So uh, and, and asking that as well. So I just wanted to bring that up here. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, that'd be great. We'll put that in the notes and yeah.
Hey Hal, thank you for being engaged. Um, it's great to hear, uh, the updates that you provide them. With regard to the sidewalks, uh, I, I, I did see where they kind of moved. I think they moved them twice, right? Yeah. Um, maybe it's something that probably, I don't know, can't be fixed because what we're talking about is, like you said, ADA access, pedestrian right of way, which is, and I, I realize the, uh, ADA is a subset of the pedestrians. But if we move them too close to the roadway, then they're going to interfere with traffic. So that leads me to ask, how far away from the roadway can they be? Because that's like the last remaining frontier, right?
Mm-hmm. I don't know if that's in here. I know they're up, right now they're two to three feet away, but I don't think it
Right.
mentioned in the report, like how close they can be.
Yeah. Cause that kind of, when they're, when they're moved two feet again inward, inward. Again, that's interfering with the pedestrian, with two-way pedestrian traffic more specifically.
You could follow up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Put them in the grass.
So the question was to remove them and put them in a grass. Not, because they just moved it six inches. You know, they, they swapped it. Sorry, but they just moved it from here to here. That's all they did. We want it, I mean, gone and put it, because there are no, it's just no parking signs really. Four out of the seven is no parking and nobody's going to park on that. It's a road. The PP Street, the road. There's no parking there anywhere. Yeah.
Actually, I know where that is.
I get, remember the pictures.
So, so real, real quick, man. So just to clarify, can you, can you find out if there's an option to put the signs like Maoka of the sidewalk? So they're actually on the edge of where the grass is. Right? So they're off, out of everyone's way or get rid of them all together. Is that right? Right?
Maybe eliminate a few. I mean, you guys said four of the seven are no parking.
So I, I just want to remind everyone here, in the 1990s, they did a complete, uh, uh, the city did a full, complete streets report on the PP Avenue, which included sidewalks on both sides. They talked about a lot of different things. And so that sat on a shelf for 30 years now. So that's unfortunate, but that's something that was, that's there and can be brought back to life. I think, I don't know. But anyway, just for a reminder.
John, go ahead.
So all these streets that we're having issues on, if, if the city would have, um, required traffic circles at all the intersections, they would have slowed down traffic a lot. I've been to plenty of places on the mainland that they full of traffic circles and it really, it really controls the traffic. But what I'm really going to talk about, thank you, thank you for all you're doing. But, um, if, so I always bring up the, the Westlock Shoreline Path. The Leeward Bike Way is going to, um, be completed hopefully this summer and, uh, and it's just in horrible condition. And I just like, I'm asking the administration if they would, uh, send, meet with me so I could take them on a tour to show them the situation. I'm just, CIPs don't work. I, I it needs to come to the mayor's attention and the DTS to really put it in the budget to fix this problem. It's a maintenance issue. It's from the 1980s. It hasn't been maintained since then. And with the Leeward Bike Way connecting on both sides, it's going to get a lot more use. And people are going to get hurt because right now it's got big rivets in it. The, I mean, it's just got a lot of problems. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? I got one real quick. Just to follow up the Kamakana intersection. You know, the report that you gave said within the last three years, it warranted no traffic light. I think within the last, that last three years, there was that death. There's that, and, and then just a few days ago, again, there was another bad accident there. So if the DFM or Department of Transportation, whoever can work with our city officials to, you know, work with Gentrion and getting these permanent process going a little bit smoother, quicker in these areas of where badly needed, where before another community member passes away or gets, um, injured. These are really warranted. We don't need another study or question about it. These things are happening now. Thank you. Any questions for the community? Kurt, go ahead.
If the city, um, keep getting inquiries about, um, Geiger and Kamakana, are there's any way the city can put in provisions on a timeline after somebody gets killed? Uh, or a developer expedited, or you guys should find them. I know there's something there. So it's up to the city if they decide to do that. Second question, the 21 cluster homes. The mayor and Department of Planning and Permitting, the Director and everybody from the city, unless they change, like they always do, gave the word to this community. Mayor, as you already said, absolutely not. So tonight, what I'm hearing from you is that with the EIS, blah, 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 blah. The EIS should be in a provision of climate change, sea level rise, because their little cesspool thing or their little drain is close enough to the sea level rising. If they take all of that into accountability, they cannot even build six homes on that lot. So I'm just hoping nobody's sleeping at DPP because the mayor gave this community his word and his word is bond. So again, I understand what you're saying, what they're telling you. I'm just telling you what the mayor told us and the lady who was a DPP person, that there's no way they could put that on that property because there's no infrastructure for it. There's no lane, there's no sidewalks. There's no lane, there's no sidewalks, there's no drains, and there's definitely not enough water. So those are the things I hope, please, maybe I will send one letter to, to DPP. Absolutely don't even consider. Because they came to our meeting, one of our other meetings, and said that they was looking to lessen the number. So we got to change the number from 21 to being less, so, please, if you can, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ray Palkos, go ahead.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Chair. K. How. First of all, I just want to thank you so much for all the hard work that you're doing in the community, addressing the community concerns, meeting with the Ever Beach Neighborhood Board. Our parks looking amazing with the green grass that it is now and seeing the Kiki's out there playing on actually grass. Just want to say thank you so much for having all that. And rain. Yeah, thank you for the rain. That's, that's, and it looks good, and there's no complaints based on that. But I do have a, also, I want to thank you for the lights that was installed and the new parking lot that you guys had out here in the community. Not installed, but fixed the park lights. The dugout is not there still yet. When that tree fell down, are you aware about that tree falling down in the community park? It also ripped out the dugout. So what is the plans on that dugout, or is it going out to CIP? Do you guys have already planned on fixing that dugout? Because the parks are being used, and just wanted to know what's, what's been happening at this time.
I got a follow-up on that. I don't know what's happening with the dugout.
I do have a suggestion. If I can get a community involved to help build that dugout, whether it's a cement and a fence and get it going, because sometimes that dugout might take a year or two, maybe longer. I might be able to get some friends out there to help build them to specs with the city. So let me know if we can be a part of helping in rebuilding that dugout. Thank you.
The dugout, the backstop, you know, just to show them all at one time, you know, sprinklers, they need sprinklers.
Go ahead.
I know you guys remember a few months ago, I was here with the XL Football League President, Bryson, you guys remember it? So thank you, the sprinklers are working. Even though the rain came, the kids are not getting cut from the rocks, so now there's grass. Because we were breeding up a lot of dirt for a long time. But we see the sprinklers. Before it was just a little area where the sprinklers just trickling, but it's working now, and since our last meeting, the kids are happy. There's no complaints, the parents not complaining, their bag is dirty, their purse. Oh my God, my purse is dusty, you know? So the kids are healthy and they're good, there's no dust, there's no cuts from the exposed rocks. So there's a lot of grass on all the parks right now. Thank you. Mahalo. I know John knows a concern and Alex, yeah, you guys, mahalo.
See no other questions? Thank you very much, K. How. Okay, moving on to council member District One. Andrea, she's done on. Okay, moving on to council. Member District Nine, Ogi Toba.
Good evening, Chair, Neighborhood Board, members of the community, and everybody watching at Olelo. Thank you, K. How, for talking about the zoo, so I'm going to not talk about the zoo, but please vote. Also, I know you talked about the cleanup on Saturday, so we're going to leave that out. So I just want to talk about last, the last meeting we had, and I handed out the CIP for the last, I think, two city councilmen, so you guys got that. Let's see, this, again, yeah, CIP Administration, Capital Improvement Projects. Again, if there's anything that you guys want me to submit, budget starts next month. And I think from looking at the CIP and the list and hearing what K. How has to say, a lot of times we can do a lot because at the end of the day, the mayor has the ultimate power to to pull a lot of the triggers that we can get done in our community. So I think what I want, like if could, let's look at what priorities that we can really go after, like North Road, the pumps, so that make sure that when it gets to the summer, it stays green. So yes, just being very specific so that we can lean on the mayor and let him know that, you know, our community is out here and we're not asking for much, but if we can get help, that'd be amazing. So with that, I'll take questions for the community.
Any question for the board? Okay, we're going to start from the, we're going to start from the end. We've got Alex, Liam, then John Clark.
Thank you, Ogi Toba for this. I really want to recognize this spreadsheet is awesome. This appropriated versus encumbered, which is so, you know, we get money allocated for certain projects, but then the mayor has to sign off for it to act, and then it actually actually be executed to be encumbered. And we just see, we can pull the money in here, but how many of them are actually not executed, right? And so that, this is super helpful. I really appreciate this, and I'd love to see. I think this is what Liam and I actually spoke about a few months ago, about getting lists of projects and seeing which ones actually. This is the start of that, and so this is really, I really appreciate seeing this. And I noticed, like, so, you know, we spoke with Aaron as well at the Parks Committee meeting about two of the priorities, and that's Oniulu Beach Park and Puoloa Beach Park, to put those CIPs again in. Hopefully, we get the design for Puoloa Beach Park Comfort Station this year, and then we can do construction next year. But in the case that it doesn't go through, we can at least do the design next year. And then for the Puoloa Beach Park, which is, and Favela was at this and had some really good input on as well, but it's about putting a roof, but also you're going to have to make improvements to the infrastructure. And now that we, I've written letters to the mayor, and that's probably not going to happen this year, so we got to put it in again next year, so we can keep hitting them with it. So I just want to emphasize those two things. Thank you.
Liam, go ahead.
Yeah, I think board member Gaus covered most of it, but I just wanted to confirm, so with the way the process works, let's, let's take, for example, the beach park, the roof, the pavilion. Is my understanding right that there's a one-year window from the time it's allocated that you have to execute all those funds? So you would have to execute the design? And if you wanted to do it all in one year, you have to do the design and construction all in one year? And if that is the case, what's the strategy? Is the idea to do just the design one year and hope that we get the funds again the following year to do the actual build?
No, a lot of times, those CIP projects, what I understand, you put in, and it's like a six-year window. So if you look, it is a six-year window. It does, it can move quicker if we have, you know, all the drawings in place and then, you know, they get approved, but a lot of it comes through, you know, the departments and what's priority. Again, it's, yeah, you see projects in there that go back almost 20 years, so.
I'm confused, I'm confused by that, though, because I thought it was one year. I thought that's why we're trying to get the plan in this year and execute the funds for the plan and then re-request another one for the following year, because we all, not, once, once the funds are awarded in a contract, then maybe you have six years, but it has to be awarded within that year.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, John Clark.
House member, again, thanks for all that you do. Just, and I appreciate the candor by showing the year when you were involved and when Rahmanor was involved, looking at the community pool on there. Would love for that to get back on there. I think that disappeared from the neighborhood plan altogether at some point. But more specifically, North Road improvements, and I noticed we have the intention being speed tables. Is there any way, because I would like us to sort of, if we're going to ask for something, let's ask for something. I know you and I talked about this, that, you know, we, there are certain improvements that have to be made. I've reached out to the Navy in a couple of areas to talk about that project. Still waiting to hear back, so. But just under half a million dollars for speed tables, and I realize that there is some speeding that goes on there, but why couldn't we just ask for, like, you know, ask for the stars and then see if we don't get the moon or something?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, you know, the last time we talked about it, you know, it is now a public safety issue, right? And I think what we're going to try to do is put in a result so that we force the issue. You know, if not, you know, how long have we been fighting for the improvement of North Road, so?
So as a community, I remember when Ever Beach did have air conditioning, and I realize that's, that's on a state level, and that was DOE, a little bit different. But I think we should apply sort of the same sort of strategy here. If we were to prioritize this list at the city and county level, and this, and this is my question, not rhetorically to the board, if we did that, could, where would North Road fall on the priority list?
All right, I'm in. If that's a part, if this is going to be the priority of the community, I think we have to do whatever we can to make sure that the, it's on the mayor's radar to help us get the things that we need to move this project along.
To work. Chair.
Wait, real quick.
Sir, I had a question on.
Wait, 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 any other questions from the board?
Yeah, well, I had a question on.
Wait, 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 your time was up. Let me go back to Alex and I come back, we're back to you, sorry.
Well, I was, I was responding to John, because my question for him was, because he's for the star, so the city only, the part that's run by the city and not by the golf course and not by the Navy is actually, has sidewalk, it's actually pretty good. And so can we ask, what are we asking when we're talking about the stars? And that's the question. Are we asking them for funding to take over the whole thing? You know what I mean? Like, what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, because we talked about easement, we talked about leasing, we talked about just one entity taking it over entirely, and it makes most sense for the city and county to take it over. That's why, that's what I mean by the stars, Alex.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? Any other questions for the community? We got one. Wait, Senator.
Yeah, sorry, John. Like they said, the city will not ever take it over. Our best bet was getting Hawaiian Homes to try to acquire the property from the golf course or with the Navy to get an MOU to get the property. But the city will not take it over because it's a substandard road with no improvements. This means the city going to have to spend money for drain, sidewalks, and utilities for late. And that's not going to happen because we, I mean, you know, we've been fighting for North Road to be upgraded for years. I mean, we're glad Rahmanor got it paved, you know, in his time, but we're not going to have it unless we have an agreement with the golf course. That's where we need to, that's what I mean, Ogi was supposed to do, but as a community, that's where we should focus, is making the golf course clean up their mess. Because their stuff is pushing into North Road, and they're not fixing their fence line, and that's the issue. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, Senator. So we actually met with the golf course, and they were very amenable to, I guess, for lack of a better word, teaming up with the other entities. It may have been all tough, you know, in principle, but it was the manager, the general manager, and she was going to take it to her board at some point.
Well, we know how many times we have cleaned it in the last three years. They got to help us maintain, at least maintain, you know?
The problem, like I said, I mean, I just showed you guys. You guys seen the fence line? All that dirt and pilau and broke through, and that's the reason why it's hard when we as a community go clean them, because we cannot touch their side of the golf course. But I know we get every, and Ogi knows this too, probably Mitchell too. Every time we get one plan with that golf course, they change managers, and it starts all over again. That's, that's the problem. So we as a state and a city got to implement something to expedite their cooperation.
Or get something in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, formalize it.
Well, at least email.
Okay. See no other questions? Wait, I get one, real quick one on this, on this form. I see, where did it go? Acing Community Park Improvements, says for parking lot lighting. Did you ever drive around in the parking lot? You know how big those roots are right now?
Yeah.
So I think before you get new lighting, got to get rid of those roots and repave that part. I looked at that, I was like, bro, you can put new lighting, and then all of a sudden it will fall down because of the root. But, yeah, I mean, that one got to cut first and, yeah. But other than that, yeah, great. This is good. Already seen, oh, John, you got something, go ahead.
So just one thing, one thing that I think we left out is, and Alex reminded me, is that on North Road, we really, at the part that the golf course owns, there's just no place for kids to walk. And I mean, kids coming from Iroquois Point, from Capalina, they have to have a place to walk. And so I'm just hoping somehow we can figure, like, I think it's a city thing. I, you know, I hear what Senator Favela says, but I really think it's a city thing to try to take over that land through an MOA, the easement, there's got to be a way that we can do this. And, you know, maybe pay for it. I, twenty million?
Yeah, but we won't take it if it's not improved, so that's the challenge, right? And I think, I think we have a good fight to say that this is now a safety issue. We all know get kids walk to Campbell and, you know, the rest of the schools, and not only kids, but residents. So we have an opportunity. Let's take advantage of the opportunity. Everyone is here, they're hearing, you know, the concerns, and let's just keep punching away.
Plus, the buses stop going in there too, right? Is that part of the equation too?
And I think Senator Favela is also, from what I read in his newsletter, is pushing to get buses to Capalina, so. You know, we'll see what happens. Again, you know, it's a private road, and, you know, it was also said that they, you know, because it's a private world, they can close it. So, you know, we're just telling them, be good neighbors.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, go up, go ahead.
Kelvin Amaro, I got a question for City Councilman Ogi Tuba. My question is, that budget for the community budgets coming up, does that budget also include the parks, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Everything.
Okay, I got a question I wanted to ask. So basically, you know, our parks in Ever Beach for years, you know, they, they pretty much have been like, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, the parks, I could say, they're not as, what's that called? Good as other cities. You know, our parks are really, really old, and really, they need a lot of upgrading. So my question is, like, you know, the stationary equipment to exercise. You know, Pearl City, a good example, one of the parks that, I think it's Blaiso Park, they have a great exercise stationary unit that's been there for years. Now in Ever Beach, we got nothing. All we got is the old-fashioned, you know, is to do the pull-ups and just something small. It's really, 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 really bad. I mean, our community is like upgraded with, we have Hoakale, you know, where it's like, you know, a community that's, you know, much higher than our community. And to make a long story short, too, also too, that skate park, my friend, my friend's brother Austin, he was the one that actually got together to get that skate park going. Now that skate park is obsolete. So it'd be nice for us to have a very good, you know, upgraded skate park. And I used to jump ramps and roller blade and stuff, and, you know, I think that would be cool. And the last thing I got was, you know, the garbage cans? Okay, so the first garbage cans, the gray ones, they were made really well. Now, the second ones that come out, they're made really cheaply and they break a lot, especially the blue ones. So basically, you know, we're just going to the city back and forth with these cheap cans, wasting all our taxpayer money to pay for a bunch of junk. So one of the biggest problems too, that I heard from the people that fix and maintain those carts, is that they're having, they're having a very hard time to maintain them and to get the parts. So they said that a lot of people are frustrated because these carts are so cheaply made that they just break.
Well, I appreciate you Monday and Fridays, you reach out to my office, I'd love to sit down so that you can give me a list of stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
That's about it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. See no other questions? Thank you, council member.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, we'll move on, sorry. It's already nine thirty. Ogi, take them outside. Thank you, council member. Okay, move it on. Oh, wait, sorry. Julie, you had something for K. How, real quick?
Hi, K. How.
Yeah, one more question, I'm sorry, K. How.
He just, I think, I think just mentioned the word maintenance, but they talked about how the grass in the parks have been getting, looking a lot greener. And as you know, we're exiting Lonoa Kamakahiki season, right? So do, is there, and he said maintenance, is there maintenance enough that while it's looking green now, as we enter and exit that season, are we, as a parks? Sorry, I'm asking you this not as a mayor's rap, as DPD's parks. Are we prepared to be able to keep it looking the same, or are we just benefiting from the season?
I will, I'm going to be very honest, we're definitely benefiting from the rain. But we did do a lot of irrigation repairs. There's some, I think, irrigation that will need to be constructed, but that is, you know, a capital improvement project. But I can't say for sure. I would have to check with our staff to see where we are with each of the parks and. to see where we are with each of the parks and, you know, the irrigation issues that we had.
Okay.
Really, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Kelson, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kelson Lee. I'm with the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. I have a couple of main breaks to report. From December 2nd, there was a main break at ninety-one five one five Hulia Place. On December 13th, there was a main break at ninety-one six six seven Kilinahi Street and ninety-one six six eight Kilinahi Street. On December 27th, there was a main break at ninety-one one zero five two Anau Na'o Street. And on January 2nd, there was a main break at ninety-one one three three eight Imelda Street. Our general water announcements, there's a hundred dollar toilet rebate rebate for a limited time only. The Board of Water Supply is providing its customers with a big offer of a hundred dollar rebate on water sense labeled toilets. This is more than double the usual rebate amount and is only offered for a limited ninety day period through April 18. This special rebate is limited to four per household and ten for commercial customers. For more information, please go to www boardofwatersupply.com backslash rebates. Any questions?
Any question for the board? John, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. We spoke about this, and we mentioned this with Ke'ao. We, the Parks Committee would like to get oriented or educated, is the right word, on the R1 system in Eva community from Honolulu. So, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you go back and ask that if we could coordinate with the city, get Enterprise Services and a Board of Water Supply person to come to one of our committee meetings and give us the full, just be a talk story to teach us about the R1 system, the primary system that you folks operate, and then the secondary system that Enterprise Services operates with the golf courses and the other few of the parks. Thanks.
Yes, definitely.
Any other questions for the board? Seeing none? Go ahead, Tara.
So, Tara Rojas, I have a question, actually two questions. One of them was, it's interesting to hear how we're talking about the parks and then the age of the parks, and then just the kind of the differences in the parks on the island. So, hearing you give the results of the how many water main breaks, my first question is, is why? Like, why are there so many water breaks? Do you know why? Can you share that? Is it due to the age? Is it due to the area? And then how much, you know, what can be done? Like, is it, is there any upgrade that's gonna be happening? I know it's gonna probably cost, but then that's one. And then the second one, if you can answer that first, and I'll.
Yeah, that helps me a lot. Thank you. To answer that regarding all of these recent main breaks, a lot of it has to do, there's a lot of factors that take place. It could be the location. In this case, a lot of them, looks like those pipes were installed from nineteen fifty-nine to the nineteen seventies. So, that age is kind of where we start to see them kind of breaking, especially the material is cast iron. So, that is kind of susceptible to a lot of corrosion from the soils and things like that. And we do budget yearly funds to do that kind of maintenance. That's a main part of our responsibilities as the board to go in and keep maintaining that and repairing it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I had two parts, but then, so that, that.
Sorry.
Oh, well, sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna do that all at once, but he said he wanted to answer, and then.
No, you wanted to do that, not him.
Oh, sorry. Oh, well.
I'm sorry about that, but there's only one question per one minute. Yeah, give you one more, you can ask one more question. Go ahead, Tara.
No, no, so my other question was, so, did you ever figure out what happened within, if the twenty million gallon per month is still happening in the Gentry area?
I would need to follow up. I haven't heard any feedback back, but I will follow up. I believe it's ongoing with our board.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, Senator, you got something?
Yeah, I was set up, but I had a question when I get shown in there.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I think the board needs, because a lot of them wasn't here when Cal, remember when Cal was here, Rachel? He used to give us, because he used to work with R1 Water. So, he gave us a list, and he told us a lot of, Mahiko Park, I don't know if it's all to this day, that if the Honolulu treatment plant don't turn on the water, we won't get any water. And that was part of the problem with Uloa District Park and Mahiko. I don't know the rest of the parks. I know how Bush is fresh water, but as fresh as it can be. But can you give them a list on where our water coming from? Because if it's coming from Honolulu treatment plant, that's one of the problems, somebody forget turn on the switch. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, can do.
Okay. Thanks, Kelson.
Thank you.
Moving on to DOE. None? Moving on to Governor's Rep. Perry on or here? Seeing none? Okay. Kind of multitask. Okay, moving on to Department of Transportation.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Chair, members of the board. This is Fania Mata with the Department of Transportation. So, first, I want to report on a resolution that the board adopted last month to add striping and signage to Fort Weaver Road's right turn only lanes. So, I'm happy to report that, yes, we're going to be doing this. Estimated completion date on the design will be end of February two thousand twenty-four. The estimated construction start date will be end of May two thousand twenty-four. Okay, and I also have some project updates. First one on my list is Farrington Highway widening, couple a golf course to Fort Weaver Road. The question was if we could provide a timeline and some specifics about what construction will look like, such as road closures. So, the estimated start of construction is NTP will be issued, or was issued, I'm sorry, on February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. Physical construction scheduled to start in two thousand twenty-four, May eighteen. Project completion is estimated to take about two years. And then I also have the phasing on the construction. So, phase one will be East Makai of Farrington Highway. And that's gonna be between April of this year to November of this year. Phase two will be East Malka of the highway from November of this year to April of two thousand twenty-five. Phase three will be the H Bridge. That will be between April two thousand twenty-four and January two thousand twenty-six. Phase four, which is West Makai, will be from March two thousand twenty-five to September two thousand twenty-five. And phase five will be West Malka of the highway. And that will be from September two thousand twenty-five through March two thousand twenty-six. And while work is being done at Honolulu Bridge, Old Fort Weaver Road may become a detour route. The contractor plans to keep one lane in each direction open at all times. So, there are still some outstanding design issues with Kailua Water Company coordinating with BWS on the relocation of their water lines. There's some drainage issues, outstanding drainage issues on Dior and Aran. And there's some issues with the availability of a couple of Eko poles that need to be relocated that may delay relocation construction. So, our efforts to mitigate the delay, we're working on trying to resolve the design issues, and we may begin construction in the order that we resolve the issues. Okay, next project. Fort Weaver Road between Geiger Road and Ke'au Nui Drive and Fort Weaver Road just after the Laulani Village Shopping Center to Ke'au Ne'ula Boulevard pedestrian improvements. So, this project has not started the design yet, but it is scheduled to go to construction in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Next project, Fort Weaver Road between Kila'ha Street and Pu'u Loa Beach Park pedestrian improvements. So, we are still determining the scope of this project. It is slated to go to construction in fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven. Next project, Fort Weaver Road and Ki'aha Street.
Yeah, I have about thirty, thirty more seconds, please.
Do you want me to just, John, I can just send you an email on all these projects?
Well, that, uh, can we, Chair, can we just let, we haven't had an update from the H dot in a long, long time, so this is very important to us.
Okay, how many more report?
I think John gave me just like four more projects.
Okay.
Okay, so the permanent striping was put on hold until the nearby plastics project is completed. The plastics project work is set to start at the end of March two thousand twenty-four, which is dependent on the material coming in. Permanent striping is anticipated to be completed by end of April two thousand twenty-four. Okay, next project, Fort Weaver Road shared use path, Launui Street to Farrington Highway. The contractor is being scheduled to come out to resurface the road. We don't have a schedule yet, but I will email John when I get it. Next project, Fort Barrett Road Railroad Crossing. Let me see, traffic signal, let me see, project was advertised on July five, two thousand twenty-three. NTP issued on December twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Contractor plans to start work on March two thousand twenty-four. Substantial completion done in March two thousand twenty-five. Okay, next project, Cunia Road resurfacing H one to Limon Gate. This project consists of the following improvements. I'm gonna just email the type of improvements to John, but right now we are awaiting the new topo data, which is estimated to be completed by March two thousand twenty-four. Scheduled for construction to be evaluated after topo has been received. The target RTA date is August two thousand twenty-four. Construction is estimated to take twelve months. And I'm gonna email John all of this later on tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Fon. Thank you for the update. Any question from the board?
Uh, Chair, I just want to say, Fon, thank you so much for coming and showing and giving a really, really good update and actually really, really good news. So, I appreciate your time with this, and thank you for being so thorough tonight.
Thank you very much, Fon. Yeah, moving on. Senator Aquino's office, anybody here online?
Hello, Chair, board members. My name is Nathaniel Isay, and I will be representing Senator Aquino this evening. I also stand by my report. Thank you.
Any question for Senator Aquino's office? Board, community? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Yeah, moving on to Senator Kurt Vivala.
First of all, I want to thank Senator Henry for sending somebody now to our meetings and Board Member Clark, I told Shonta Jima personally in a hearing to show up. So, just to let you know, I told him, I promise you that. I never promised to make you show up, sorry. Give you one up, couple of updates. I'm glad that they're gonna be finally putting in the lights, the flashing lights, or, like I said, you can see the speed hump that we have on Fort Weaver Road, our famous speed hump. Glad that they'll be coming in. One is something that is a pet peeve of Shane Greely, and with community knowing that our kids gotta walk from Iroquois Point, so I just wanted to tell the Marines, thank you for being good neighbors, working with the city and my office and Capalina, and we're gonna get bus service as soon as the bus city finds out from DTS if they can continue the route inside. So, it's not gonna stop at every place in Iroquois Point, oh, Capalina. It's gonna stop at the bus depot. So, the Marines offered to escort the bus in. Every time the bus come in, I know you guys think it's a lot of time, but they're willing to do that to bring the bus in to the entrance part of Capalina. So, they go through the gun range because of some kind of federal laws. And from there, the bus gonna go to the depot, and we want them to go out, and hopefully, we can make them turn left. We get new administrations. Hopefully, we can make them turn left on Fort Weaver Road to go in front of the schools, Campbell, Ke'au, Elima, and so forth. They never gave me the times, but the times I had suggested was getting it from Principal Greely and Principal John Henry. Because how this all took apart is that I went there and the kid missed the bus. And I was sitting at the depot. Of course, they don't know me, so they're not gonna ride with me. But they walked all the way, not to Campbell, but to Elima. And of course, that's not an easy walk. So, those are the things, why we kept on pressing, and it was really good that they never thought the Marines was gonna, we thought we was gonna have problems with the Marines and the Capalina, but, and they came in force to the meeting. And they was all for it. So, that's something that is good for the community going forward. And if anybody got any questions on my report, I'm here to answer any questions.
John Clark, go ahead.
Ora.
Thank you.
All right. Any other question or comments from the board? Community? Thank you, Senator.
No, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for supporting Anthony Lucky Honey. God bless.
Okay, moving on to Senate District Twenty-One, Senator Mike Gabbard, online.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Honorable Board and Community Members. I'm Nanook Denis, Senator Gabbard's community liaison. He sends his best wishes to you and your ohana and invites you to his second Listen Story Community Meeting of the Year on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, from nine to ten AM at the Capalae High School Teachers Lounge. You can also join via Zoom, and you can email us at sendgabbard@capital.hawaii.gov for a link to the meeting. And I'll also drop the email address in the chat afterwards. Our guest speaker will be Chelsea Arnett, coordinator of the Hawaii Invades Species Council, and Chelsea will share info on Little Fire Ant, coconut rhinoceros beetle infestations on the west side and statewide as well, and what people can do about it. The Senator will follow with a brief legislative and District Twenty-One community updates with time for Q and A at the end. The legislative session is moving at warp speed as he works to meet hearing deadlines. Please call the office or email if there are any bills under his committee that you, that you're hoping to be, that would be scheduled. I'll also link afterwards, put a link to the January newsletter in the chat for the Senator. Bill updates will be included in February's newsletter. So, please continue to reach out to sendgabbard@capital.hawaii.gov if the Senator can help you in any way. And I'm happy to bring back any questions to the Senator, if anyone has any. Mahalo.
Any questions for the board? Community? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Representative District Thirty-nine, Elijah Perick. Okay, moving on to Representative District Forty, Rose Martinez. Okay, moving on to Representative District Forty-one, David Alcos.
Thank you, Chair. The board, I'm just sharing some flyers that we just had with State Capitol over the past month. I just want to thank the community for coming out. We had opening day, January, and there were so many visitors from the community, and a lot of constituents coming out there, pushing on their bills, lobbying all their information. We also put in a lot of bills as well. I put in ten bills, and we also put in some CIP funds. So, if you scan this document, it would show all the funds that we put in. I think it's over a hundred million dollars, maybe about two hundred million dollars. You know, I get different schools also go all the way to Capalae in my zone, so some of my kids go out there as well. So, it's not just only Campbell High School. And And last couple of months, we've been working hard with the principals, with the directors of what funds that they need and how can we press forward for it. So I'm supporting these principals and what a great job that they have been doing for our community and our kids. So I had a privilege to sit in on some meetings with them over the past couple of months. And very, very interesting on how they work as a team, coming together and teaching our, our young kids out there. And then in the back, I'm showing that we're continuing on working with the city on adopt taking over the Navy land at Coral Sea Road. A lot for Parks and Recs and even trying to put in motorsport out there. And also with 808 cleanup, 808 cleanup, they doing a cleanup every Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00 at Nimitz Beach. So if you guys want to attend, join and help clean up. They also doing cleanup at Howbush and a lot of places in our community. And I just, also I want to, there was a meeting that we had at the Capitol, I wanted to address your concern about that. There was a working group that, that got started. I was unaware of the working group until like a day or two. I'm not sure how long, Alan, how long they had the working group commit, started already? It'd have been that morning or something, that working group came in. I, or, and I had that letter come on my table. I did talk to Representative Rose Martinez about, you know, the testing and why it didn't come out. I told him that that was one of the concerns our community had. And she said that she wasn't, she put in the testing and she wasn't happy with the results. And felt, I wouldn't say, she didn't say wasn't happy. They didn't feel, the guys who did the testing felt that it was done correctly. So that was their concern, that was their comment towards the Navy, if you remember. He was there, right? That was, that was somewhat what the communication was. And we were out with the, not the Navy, but Marines, yes. So it just came on board. So, but if anything come up again, I'll let you guys know ahead of time. So thank you, hoping for any questions.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Rep Alcos for being here. That working group, could you state who the members are of that working group? And if you anticipate them meeting again, is this going to be regular or ad hoc?
You know, Rose Martinez, Representative, she put this working group together. The agenda didn't have much, it was just a talk story kind of thing right there. I'll try to get more information and get that back to you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow up to that?
Go ahead.
Is there anybody that you're aware of, because you went to the meeting, that's representing the Neighborhood Board in that working group?
I wouldn't say representing the Neighborhood Board. I don't think John Clark was putting himself that way to say it. I'm representing the Neighborhood Board. He was there on the concerns and listening and trying to work with. Never have much of, just listening to progress, put it that way.
Okay, just trying to clarify, because you're there in your capacity as a state representative in the working group. Rose is there in her capacity as a state representative. So I'm assuming someone from the Neighborhood Board should probably be represented there. So I would ask the board whether we would want to vote on who would represent us in that board as in their capacity as Neighborhood Board members that are knowledgeable in this issue.
I'd like to respond to this, Chair, and turn this into a motion. So I checked the rules around permitted interactions for this. I do think it'd be appropriate for us to send members to represent us. And in the permitted interaction section of the Sunshine Law, it says the board can assign two or more members, but less than the number of members that would constitute a quorum of the board to present, discuss or negotiate any position that the board has adopted. I think it's clear that the Pu'u Loa Range, discontinuing the Pu'u Loa Range is something that the board has adopted in the past, as was stated tonight. And so it'd be completely appropriate for us to establish a permitted interaction group to meet with this working group on an ongoing basis. My recommendation would be the members of our Military Committee, Military Affairs Committee, as well as Alex Gauss, who has been involved in some of the testing.
Yeah, that's fine.
I second the motion.
No need, no need motion, all it is, it will just add this Pu'u Loa Range to the Military Affairs. And whenever these issues come up, and hopefully we get it earlier than the, than the meetings coming that day of. And whoever from the Military Affairs Committee can go out and represent the board.
I just, I want to be clear about the Sunshine Law rules. If we were to send the committee, it would become an open, it would become an open meeting.
More than three, yeah, yeah. Got it. There's no more than two. Got it.
Okay, that's it for the questions?
Yes, Rep.
Thank you, and may you guys Super Bowl team win.
Yep, moving on. Representative District 42, Representative Diamond Garcia.
Aloha, board, thank you, I got a few minutes left till we're cut off on Olelo. So we're back in session, I brought my staff with us this evening. My chief of staff, John, session staff, Rockland and Hunter as well. There are go to guys at the office, great team we have going. So if you need anything, call the office, we're here to help you. There's a QR code on the front, scan that. It goes to our recent interview on KI TV about the About Time bill, which is one going through the Senate right now. And there was a House companion to that as well, which limits the sale temporarily of homes in Hawaii to residents. And so that bill is currently being discussed and heard at the Capitol. The backside, there's a list of my office bill package. There's a few bills that is specific to West Oahu. I do want to cover some CIP requests. What was mentioned as a priority from our Complex Area Superintendent Tajima was that because Ho'opilie has no school right now, lots of, or most of the kids who are going to public schools are using Eva Elementary School. And so they're at capacity. So we've submitted again this year, 2.75 million for eight portable classrooms to be installed there for the overflow from Ho'opilie. There's some other CIPs that's listed for the Kapolei area, as most of my district is Kapolei. But one bill I did want to mention was HB 1723. This is a recall referendum and ballot initiative bill. Most states have this, Hawaii doesn't, where if you're not happy with your representative, your senator, or even judges, the citizen should have the right or a process to recall their elected officials. So that would do just that. And then lastly, there's a QR code on the backside, scan that. It's a pretty cool video, we just released it a few weeks ago on how to testify at the Capitol. With that, any questions?
Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? Yeah, I don't see the bill in here for the, the parent one you was talking about.
Which one is that? Oh, the one today?
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't my bill.
Oh, I know.
That bill basically says, yeah, there was HB 2367, I think it was. That was, it passed second reading today. And that would allow minors from 14 to 17 years old the right to consent to medical services and procedures with no parental consent. So that passed second reading today with just four no votes in the House, FYI.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Melvin.
So Melvin Amara, I got a question for, excuse me, sorry, I forgot your name.
Diamond.
Forgot, I guess, sorry, I have so many things running through my mind, forgive me that. I got a question, actually. So basically, I heard that there was another bill trying to be passed. It was about term limits, is that still on?
There was a few bills introduced this session, they're all dead so far. Last year, there was one bill that was part of the Foley Commission. It was part of the Ethics Package to give a, I think it was a 12-year term limit to elected officials. That died, it was David Tarnas in the House. It was one person who just killed it in committee.
Oh, so no, we're probably not going to bring it back, you think?
Not, not this year.
Oh, well, I hope we bring it back.
Yeah, I agree.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you, Representative. Oh, sorry, Kurt, you got something? Oh, you stopped me. Okay. You have something for Representative Garcia? Okay, go ahead.
Janie Gresso, I'm of Beach, I'm still the 2022 Republican candidate for District 40, thank you. I would like to commend Representative Garcia for your works in the bill about having that menstrual products in the men's bathroom, any?
It wasn't my bill again.
Right, but for speaking out on it on the floor and everything like that, unnecessary. It would be more fair as when I would be going door to door last time, speaking with people from my community. Kupuna, older people always ask me, why is so many things addressed for people not of their age group? And this was especially for times of COVID funds, things like this?
It started during COVID, yes.
Yeah, and so it would be much, if, if, if we putting anything in restrooms, maybe we can do like adult incontinence products, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, right? Like that would be, make it more a meaning, there for people of all ages.
Agreed, yeah, no, the bill would be palatable if it was being installed in, in, in the women's restrooms where that makes sense.
Right.
In this case, the reason why.
But even so, you know what I mean? Like sometimes people of older age don't even need those kind of products. So again, we're leaving out people, you know what I mean? Putting people inside the community and stuff, that's our kupuna, you know what I mean?
We're going to be, yeah, so the bill passed second reading. It has a third reading and a final reading. So we do plan to introduce some floor amendments.
So maybe some things we can say is, oh, can we give incontinence, without incontinence products for older people too, if we doing all that kind of stuff, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Diamond.
Rep, thank you.
First, they gotta start restocking Tola Peppa in our bathroom before they start adding more stuff in the, get rid of, I just had them in these bathrooms, still get that one fly Tola Peppa. One, 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 get rid of them. That's the one. Okay, moving on to committee reports, anything for Parks?
The only thing we have to say is that we had a meeting last week and there'll be minutes out. So then if you guys check the website and you care about what our minutes say, go ahead, go ahead and read them, thanks.
Okay, thank you, moving on to education.
Just one comment, thank you Senator for carrying through on my request when I visit you at the Capitol to talk to the Complex Area Superintendent Shantajima. I would like to note, we do have one principal here, Principal Greenland, thank you for coming today. I know you don't, you're here, but you don't represent the DOD. So, but I want to explain just in quick 45 seconds on why that's important, why I think Complex Area Superintendent Tajima should be at these meetings. Last month, it was reported that DOE let a half a billion dollars, just under a half a billion dollars lapse of available funds. You know, our schools, I mean, I'm, I'm very partial to our schools and our future leaders, who I call them. So to let $460 million lapse to me is inexcusable. And I know some of that has been pulled back and reallocated. But I would like him to be here to answer to the community on why those funds lapsed. Somebody should be talking about that, thank you.
Transportation?
We have nothing, we had a great transportation update, so that's all we got.
Okay, thank you, moving on to Ompo.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, Public Safety, Community Outreach, Homeless Outreach. Hey, thank you, Economic Development? Climate Change?
No report.
Hawaiian Affairs? Military Affairs? So we're going, anything for military, anybody? Okay, moving on to announcements, next regular board meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 14, 7:00 p.m., virtually WebEx and in person over here at Efe Beach Library. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday, 6:00 p.m. Every second and fourth Friday at 10:00 a.m., Olelo, Channel 49. Remember, if you no vote, no grumble, so register for vote, all right? Meeting adjourned.